David.
Commissioner Diaz, and as I say, a commissioner servant was here earlier but has not yet returned.
Okay, no problem. But noting that the time is 5:30 and I hope everyone can hear me okay. I will call this special meeting to order. Welcome fellow commissioners and of course members of the public who are joining us for the special meeting of the County of San Diego's Independent Redistricting Commission. By way of introduction, my name is David Bain. I have the honor and pleasure of chairing this commission as well as having a broken down printer. That means I have to be doing this a fair bit to look at the various papers we're dealing with. So if I'm looking away from the screen, it is not meant as disrespect, it is meant as keeping the meeting moving. Today's meeting is indeed being held virtually. So thanks to all our technical and other staff for setting up things so that we can have a successful meeting tonight. I also want to assure the public that we will maintain the same high levels of interest and commitment to public engagement today and in the future, whatever the format of our meetings. Let me now turn to the IRC's clerk, David Hall, to provide additional information about today's meeting. David.
Thank you Chair Bain. At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who wish to provide oral testimony during today's meeting. To please review the instructions posted on the redistricting website at drawyourcommunity.com. We ask that individuals who wish to speak submitted online requests to speak for them in advance for planning purposes. All timely requests to speak from the public made at today's meeting will be honored. In addition, agendas, minutes, and supporting materials for the commission's meetings are posted on the redistricting website, including instructions to request translation. Meeting agendas are translated into Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, Tagalog, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, Laotian, as required by law. In addition, I'd like to note for the record that we have received 11 generally comments from the public which have been distributed to the commission and posted online. Thank you Chair Bain.
Thank you, David, for all that and thank you to the members of the public who submitted their comments. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. David, could you please call the roll?
Thank you Chair Bain.
Here.
Vice Chair Katerina.
Here.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Here.
Yep. Lost my attendance. Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Dostal.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Inman.
Here.
Commissioner Kurgliak.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Pons.
Here.
Commissioner Russ.
Here.
Commissioner Servin.
Present.
Thank you Chair Bain, we do have a call.
Very good. Thank you, David, and thanks again commissioners for being here. The next item is the discussion and possible approval of recommendation from the ad hoc committee. On selection of special VRA council, Voting Rights Act Council, and authorization for contract negotiations. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Servin, I want to thank him, Commissioner Larson, and Commissioners Hanson. For all the great work they've done on this issue. They were able to reach a solid recommendation for special counsel under a very tight timeline and had to design a process to make sure it was done correctly. I'm sure all of us appreciate their willingness to serve on such an important issue and thank them for their service. Thanks again for me. With that, Commissioner Servin, the floor is yours. Commissioner Servin, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Sorry, sorry, sorry. So. So this will begin the ad hoc committees. Report to the Independent Redistricting Commission. So next slide please. So this is the, this slide describes the process that the IRC took to create and decide on. Having us ad hoc committee. So as you might remember at our September 9th meeting, the IRC voted to engage a special VRA council based on a request for qualifications. Developed by IRC General Counsel. Which was presented to the commission first on August 18th, revised and presented to the commission again and approved by the commission on September 9th. The IRC also voted to contract acquisition of this special council through our general council. With a recommendation made by an IRC head doc committee and final selection by the final IRC or by the full IRC, excuse me. General Counsel then released the RFQ to approximately 28 potential bidders, individuals, firms, and academic institutions. As well as to a listserv of election law experts and attorneys maintained at the University of California Irvine. After which two RFQ responses were received by the due date of September 20th. Those two respondents were best best in Krieger or BBK from Irvine, California. And second, Federal Compliance Consulting or FCC based in Potomac, Maryland. The ad hoc committee reviewed these responses and on September 24th conducted interviews with both firms. Based on response scoring rubric and the personnel interviews, the ad hoc committee unanimously recommends selection of federal compliance consulting FCC. Lead attorney is Bruce Adelson, who is a nationally recognized voting rights attorney and has not previously worked for or in the County of San Diego. On the other hand, BBK has a number of active matters in San Diego and as such presented the appearance of a possible conflict of interest. Further, FCC proposed a single point of contact rather than a multi-member project team. And then in addition to the slides, the agenda packet includes. A timeline of detailing the events that took place in selecting the, in making this recommendation. As well as a list of the, the people who received the RFQ and the responses that, that, that we, that we received. And so with that, I turned it over to Chair Bain for. For their discussion.
Thank you very much Commissioner Servin and again thanks to Commissioner Larson and Hanson as well. For very succinct but still clear presentation. With the commission's indulgence, I'm going to continue. A slight change in the process we've had and try to merge clarifying questions and comments into the discussion of the motion. It seems to allow for a slightly. More coherent discussion in that all the pieces are together and maybe more importantly, a quicker discussion. So with begging your indulgence and recommending that we'll take clarifying questions as part of the discussion early on, let me first ask David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this item? David, I think you're muted.
Forgive me Chair Bain, I would like to note for the record, the presence of Commissioner Diaz, with her inclusion, all 14 members of the commission are present. We did not receive any advanced request to speak on this item, but if any member of the public would like to address the commission, we would welcome your comments. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands that could comment Chair Bain.
Thank you very much. As this is an action item that requires a motion before any fulsome discussion, let me ask if there's a motion. For approval of the recommendation from that hot committee for selection of federal compliance consulting FFC. As special Voting Rights Act Council and to authorize contract negotiations to begin.
Moved.
With a second for me and if we can, that actually should say FCC, so.
I was going to say, yeah, okay, so it's FCC for the record, federal compliance consulting. Moved by Commissioner Chen for approval, seconded by, by Commissioner Servin. Alright, um. Clarifying questions and comments first, but please feel free to link them to others. We'll leave the motion up, but I'm going to have to, there we go, thank you. So I have Commissioner Diaz and then Commissioner Russ. Commissioner Diaz, please.
Yes, hi, thank you for the presentation. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit more about the, the other candidate that was. Not selected. I know in the presentation, there appeared to have been a conflict of, a potential perceived conflict of interest. Could you just elaborate a little bit more on that for, just if you can. Provide some background.
Sure, just the, in, in, in posing clarifying questions to the respondent BBK, they had said that they don't necessarily have, maintain. An ongoing relationship with the county on any regular matters, but would. Take matters from time to time that either are, that either involve the county or directly. Or involve the county directly as a client. And so with that, we partly, because of that, we, we, we thought it would be. The, the, because FCC had not, had never worked in the county before and didn't have those ties. We thought it would, it would be just a cleaner relationship to have.
Yeah, I might add to that if I could.
Oh yes, please.
There was another conflict of interest. BB and K does quite a bit of work in San Diego and. Works with our general counsel on and off on various projects. One is a client of the other from time to time, not necessarily on redistricting, but. On, on, on just matters of general. Wire to wire type of consulting. We felt that this was not really proper either. So we saw that as a possible conflict of interest.
Thank you both for that. Commissioner Russ, then Commissioner Pons.
Yes, I was interested in the rubric that was developed and, and the scoring in the rubric. I, I, I'm looking through the documents here and I didn't see one. Is there, is there one available?
Yes, there is one available and we can. I don't know if we can make it the blank available to the entire commission, but I see no reason why not. It was basic, it was a set of criteria based solely on the submittal requirements that were included in the RF. Q.
And let me just ask counselor staff, is that something that's appropriate for sharing either with commissioners or with the public given that it's a hiring action?
David, if I may, it's on page eight of the.
Good.
If you look on page eight, it's, it's right there.
It is there?
Yeah, it's there.
Okay. Of the, let me get it again.
So it was based on. Their answer, their clarity of their answers to the quest, to the topic proposed, their experience, their, their interview. Their, I don't have it right, I think I have it right here.
And what Commissioner Garcia is referring to is the item three, it's, the first page of it is titled. Request for qualifications for legal services and then on page eight of the RFQ, it describes the evaluation criteria and scoring. And then so that was Commissioner Hanson was kind enough to, to, to convert that into a rubric which the three of us then used to score the RFQ. The responding RFQs.
Right there.
Or the respondents.
That isn't the exact RFQ, but I'd be more than happy to share it if that's acceptable.
Yeah, I must be on the, I'm on, I'm only seeing.
Right, you're, what you're seeing is only the pass fail part of it.
Yeah, that's all I'm seeing. Yeah, okay, so it's, it's, okay, it's not on here, okay.
I've been tripping over these papers all day. Do you think I can put my finger on it right now? Anyway, it was a total of 100 points. And the least you could earn was about 70% of that. So that we ended up with scores basically between 70 and 100. And you can see that both teams scored well. However, in the area of. Response, well, I shouldn't speak because I can't really remember, but in some of the other areas. BBQ did not score as high based on this, the fact that they were really offering more of a general counsel's work. Rather than a special counsel's work. And as such, they were suggesting a team of people of about four different people that would contribute. The lead on that team was not an attorney. There were three attorneys on the team, but we felt for our purposes to have to go through that ladder of communication and. To reach the, the final answer, we're looking for an answer that is yes or no, is this compliant or not? And so we didn't want to have basically another general counsel to advise us.
Well put.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm just not seeing that document that Rosette was referring to, that you're referring to. I don't know why I'm not seeing that on this. But I do see, I do see the document.
You're not seeing the full.
I do use your scores. I'm not saying, okay, alright, alright, that explained. No, I see the, the scores and. Yeah, it doesn't look like it was close or any of you, I can see.
Well, they were both basically. Qualified.
Yeah, yeah.
But one was more qualified than the other.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Good. Commissioner Pons, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Yes, I want to thank the ad hoc committee. I thought you did a great job. I did my own research on Mr. Addison and the FFC organization. And I got to tell you, it was phenomenal. A lot of history regarding Voting Rights Act and just, just a lot of good stuff with Mr. Addison himself, period. Just a couple of questions if I may. The period of performance, I'm curious about when do they stop? You know, because we've got them down, they offered $60,000 and I don't know what that period of performance includes. And after the maps are submitted, I would imagine there may be some litigation involved. And will they go beyond the map drawing submission process and how far down the road will they go?
They were very clear, both of them, that this would not income, not cover any litigation expense.
Okay.
Only go to the point where we accepted the, the advice and we submit the map. We select.
Okay, that's what I thought in the absence of seeing that. So maybe we as a commission should consider what happens after the maps are submitted and there could be some sort of litigation involved. Especially when it comes to the VRA, would we, could we depend on the FCC to support us? And if so, to what extent and at what cost? That's all. Just something to.
We asked both of the client or the bidders that very question and they both said that they would be an expert witness, that they would support us in litigation. But that cost was not covered by the $60,000.
Okay, and my last question is over to Ms. Marguerite. Do you think $60,000 is sufficient to cover what we are expecting them to do during this process?
Hey Commissioner Pons, yes, yes, I do believe so. They are also, in addition to advice on the draft maps and the final maps. Required to produce a report. To be included in your final report, which we'll discuss later, later on. And the report will confirm compliance of your plan with the Voting Rights Act. And the committee selected an attorney who's well qualified to do that.
Okay, outstanding. I have no more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Um, yes, so thank you ad hoc committee for. All the work that you did and all the time you put into bringing this item back to us. I still have a question about the potential conflict of interest. I'm, I'm not clear. I, I mean, I think we need to really understand what the conflict of interest is and why we're concerned about that. Looking at the rubric that is, that was included in the package, that's a pass fail. So either they passed that or they failed it. And if they passed it, then I'm not sure that conflict of interest is. Grounds for, you know, not making them. The, the first choice. So that's one comment. I have some other questions about the, what, what you're calling single point of contact. And I have to say that I'm a little concerned about the fact that what we're seeing on the FCC. Proposal is one person. With no team behind that one person. I'm assuming that there is a team. And here's my, here are my concerns. What happens if, I think, I don't remember his last name, I think his first name was Bruce. So apologies to the, the single point of contact. But what happens if this person is sick? If this person's, you know, a close family member gets sick, what if this person, you know, if some other unforeseen circumstances arise? And looking at the other clients at this. That FCC has, if I recall correctly, LA County CRC is one of their clients. What do we know about conflicts with their schedule and our schedule and the fact that deadlines are identical? For the LA County Citizens Registering Commission and ours. So. Did, do we, what do we know about that and are we? You know. To me, that's a concern and something that we need to be thinking about. Not to mention the fact that he's on the East Coast. Three hours ahead of us and many of our meetings aren't going to start until five or 5:30 in the evening and may very well go very, very late into the evening. So I, I thought both respondents. Had. Reasons to recommend them and certainly FCC had a, a, you know, very impressive track record. And had, it's not that I'm saying that they're, they don't merit our consideration. I just have some concerns about. About their proposal. Can you answer any of those?
I can take that unless, or, or Barbara, you two want to address them, address those concerns?
Go ahead. I mean, I, we, we obviously can't foresee any emergency that comes up for anybody, but certainly a lot of those issues were discussed. Ramesses, why don't you take it and then I'll add anything if I.
Yeah, I mean, I think even, so if, even without the, the. The conflict issue, the ad hoc committee still felt that we were more comfortable in dealing primarily with Bruce. As our, with, with one person as our. As our primary and. The, 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 the point of contact who's the primary manager for this, for, for performing. Would be this person and this person that has a deep. Subject matter expertise on, on the actual subject matter of the contract. Whereas with BBK, our primary point of contact was a person who wasn't a licensed attorney to begin with. And so that already made us very uneasy. So, I mean, without, even without considering the conflict of interest issue. That alone was. Was a, was a primary concern. And then as to the concern with regard to. You know. Being getting sick and the capacity that, that FCC and Mr. Addison have. I, you know, those issues came up and. And again, I guess echoing Commissioner Hanson, we, you know, we can't really foresee. Things like that happening and, you know, we can only just take contractors at their word when they say that they're, that they have the capacity to perform these, the, the. The, what's being asked of them. We, we, the, the issue of being on the East Coast did specifically come up. Mr. Addison assured us that. You know, he's, he's a, that, that's not at all an issue for him. He's, he's, he's used to working out hours and everything, so that, that was addressed.
So what it said that being on the East Coast was a positive because it added three more hours to his day that he could devote to this. And he did refer to the work that he's doing in Los Angeles and the fact that it, he can do both, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, he has that much time. I don't, I don't know how, what more we can say, just like Ramis says, I think we have to take all of these people at their word that they'll follow through and there's certainly no indication. By any of the people we talked to that they wouldn't.
I'm just wondering what, I mean, did you get any sense of who the rest of his team is? Is this is a one man shop?
No, I don't think, it's not a one man, it's a law firm. It's a law firm.
We, we just didn't see anything, any other names or resumes. We just saw the one, one person. That's the only.
I think it's important, this is one of the things we struggled with a little bit, is that the proposal that we were working it from is an RFQ. It is not an RFP. So all we asked for was their qualifications. And so we didn't get a lot of narrative about how they would handle it or what they would do because it wasn't in what they were asked to include in their proposal. And next time, I think I would prefer to be working from an RFP that would run the gamut. So that we would get that statement of work into their answer. And the statement of work was not in the answers of either of the proposals. Because it wasn't part of the, what they were asked to submit in the submittal requirements. And as a grant writer, I can tell you that the first thing you do is you look at what are the submittal requirements and you follow that to the letter. So they didn't include extra information.
And I do want to chime in here that I had the same initial. Question about whether or not RFQ was the right way to go, but partly because of the timeliness of this, that seemed the best way to go and I have every confidence based on the materials I saw. That the ad hoc committee was able to do that. I'd also just like to add on the East Coast question, I think we've seen flow analytics managed to succeed reasonably well with somebody on the East Coast contributing briefings. And as somebody who has worked in multiple time zones multiple times, it's certainly possible. That said, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, I really appreciate the questions because I think it's, it's important to be upfront and clear. About our expectations and about our questions, both for today's decision and going forward. So thank you for getting that on the record. With that. Any other comments? Seeing none, David, can you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you Chair Bain, and I would note for the record that the commissioners' names will continue to be called in random order. Commissioner Kurgliak.
Hi.
Commissioner Chen.
I.
Commissioner Larson.
You said I.
Commissioner Larson is an I.
I.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Inman. Commissioner Garcia.
Abstain.
Commissioner Garcia abstains. Commissioner Dostal. Commissioner Diaz.
I.
Commissioner Servin.
I.
Commissioner Russ.
I.
Chair Bain.
I.
Commissioner Katerina.
I.
The motion passes with Commissioner Garcia abstaining, all other commissioners being present and voting I.
Very good. Thank you commissioners and again thanks to the ad hoc committee. Now that the IRC has approved the selection of special VRA council and has authorized contract negotiations. Staff will prepare for the introduction of our new VRA council during an upcoming meeting. Before we leave this item, I'd like to turn just briefly to IRC demographer, single point of contact, Commissioner Ken Inman. For a brief status update on racially polarized voting analysis or RPV. As it relates to the timeline of having the special VRA council review the analysis and information from the statewide database. Ken, with apologies for the long introduction, please.
Thank you Chair Bain. So I can be short, we're on track. The report was finished today. And they're pulling together the executive summary. We should have that report. And uh, they're pulling together the executive summary. We should have that report, um, you know, either later today or tomorrow. So everything is on track.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. It's good to hear. Moving on to item four, discussion and possible approval of revised regular meeting schedule, updated redistricting timeline, and associated contract budget amendment for additional audio visual support. And if that sounds like there may end up being three motions in this item, you'd be correct. This item builds on our recent discussions uh, about the IRC's plans for meetings over the coming months. As you'll recall, the IRC approved a timeline of a meeting on September ninth. Tonight, after our postponement last week, staff will share more details about logistics for these upcoming meetings. During the next item, we'll consider, during the next item, we'll consider ASBASD specific plans or outreach contractor specific plans for outreach and support of the two draft map public hearings that must occur in this period. Before I turn it over to Marguerite Leoni, our general counsel for opening remarks, let me just know, I know this is a very complex set of issues in this agenda item and the following agenda item. I know commissioners have a great deal of wise and uh, effective contributions to make in the discussion. I'll ask commissioners to continue to listen closely to each other so that we can move forward towards a decision as smoothly as possible. But I do not want to rule out or shut down any commissioner for making any suggestions or comments they want. I'll just ask all commissioners to bear in mind the complexity of these issues so that we're very clear in what we're talking about at any given moment. So I'm going to turn first to Marguerite and then ask her to hand things off to Barbara Jimenez, our staff lead, who can provide the commission with the presentation. Hold on just one second. Um, I have a point of order from Commissioner Caterina. A- a- Co-Vice Chair Caterina, excuse me. Uh, Amy, do you want to just vocalize it? I think that'd be the simplest way.
Oh, sure. Um, my, my point of order question is um, included in this document are um, suggested locations for the draft map public hearings, which we have not yet discussed with uh, ABASD. And it seems premature to vote on a timeline for something that we, that we have a suspicion might change after discussion. Um, and I would like to propose that we table this agenda item until after ABASD provides their update on the draft map uh, public hearings. And we have input from the commissioners regarding those two draft map public hearings.
Okay, so it's not so much a point of order, it's a motion to table this agenda item until after the next agenda item, correct?
If that is the appropriate action, then yes, I would move that we table this until after the ASB item.
And I just want to be crystal clear for my own knowledge and for commissioners, um, meaning go on to item five, which would uh, approve the outreach plan for the draft map public hearings and deal with that aspect before we go into the meeting schedule? Item?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Um, okay. So there's a motion on the floor um, to table agenda item four until after agenda item five. I need a second. Commissioner Brown, is that a second? I'm sorry, Commissioner Brown, are you muted? There we are.
I was. I was having a hard time getting the cursor over there. So, yes.
Okay, so seconded. Um, we'll turn to discussion. Commissioner Diaz.
The deep budget amendment um, discussion is also folded into the presentation, right? For ABASD and the reasoning for it.
Um, my understanding is that the budget request is in agenda item four, yes.
Okay, I'd like to get more information about the justification for the budget amendment.
Okay, well, w- right now, the focus is, are we going to do the outreach plan that includes the draft public hearings, draft map public hearings discussion first?
Yes.
So let's restrict ourselves to that, if that's okay. Thank you. Commissioner Pons.
Uh, yes, um, although I understand Commissioner uh, Caterina's comments, uh, that seems to be sort of in reverse. I think the commission should be driving the supporting elements instead of supporting elements dragging the commission forward. I mean, we know the process. We know the meetings that's required. And I think that all of the supporting actors, whether it's flow analytics, ABASD, or even if it's the FFC, whatever they do, FCC, that it should be in support of the commission and not the other way around.
Well, thank you. Any other comments before we vote on the motion to table agenda item four until after agenda item five? Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
Yes, I just wanted to um, a- address the draft map hearings are ABSD's responsibility to conduct and we need to hear from them about their recommendations. Um, and, and I, what I'm concerned about is that we vote on this ma- this um, this timeline, which says we're going to have a meeting in District One and District Four for the two draft map hearings. And, and it's possible that during our discussion with ABASD, we come up with a different um, recommendation. And then we'll have to go back and uh, redo the timeline vote with new information.
Okay, I think that's understood. Thank you. Um, I wanted um, Marguerite, did you have something you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, sorry. Okay. I did want to clarify that my own thinking in approving the agenda, as said, was along lines with what Commissioner Pons described. I'm confident we can make adjustments if we need to. I do want to offer one technical correction that I'm sure was not intentional, that it's not ABASD who will conduct the hearing, that of the public hearings, that of course is the commission who will conduct them, but the question of how and in what way ABASD will support them. Completely legitimate point. All right. So seeing no other requests for discussion. David, would you please call the roll on the motion to table agenda item four until after discussion of agenda item five?
Thank you, Chair Ben. Commissioner Larson.
Hi.
Commissioner Kurgliak.
Hi.
Commissioner Brown.
Hi.
Commissioner Garcia.
Hi.
Chair Baim.
Nay.
Commissioner Serbin.
Nay.
Commissioner Caterina.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Pons.
Nay.
Commissioner Dostal.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
Nay.
The motion passes. Uh, Commissioners, Chair Baim, Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Pons, Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Chen voting no. Nine commissioners voting aye. The vote is nine to five. Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you, David, and thank you, Commissioners. Um, let me just make sure before we move on. Jason, are you connected and can you hear?
Yes, Chair.
Very good. Thank you, because you're going to be a critical point of this. So we will now turn, oh, how did that happen? So uh, we will turn to agenda item five, a discussion and possible approval of the ABASD outreach plan for draft map public hearings. This item is for the IRC to hear how the Outreach Contractor Asian Business Association San Diego will continue to s- its support for public outreach and engagement to maximize broad and diverse community input in support of and at the IRC's two draft pub- map public hearings later this fall. ABASD's Jason Baguia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Baim. I believe liberty, if we can. I know the majority of the commissioners had already seen this plan per the last uh, meeting. Uh, if we could go to page nine. Uh, this is the item up for discussion um, with some of our comments and recommendations regarding this, of course. Um, as Commissioner Pons had mentioned, our job is to support the commission uh, for roles such as this, but uh, we will provide our justifications for uh, these two items for the November first meeting and the December second meeting. Uh, regarding the locations, uh, our recommendation for the public hearings uh, would be in District One and District Four. During the draft map phase of the plan, District One and District Four only had one meeting each, while the other districts had two meetings, if you include the general meetings. Based on comments from commissioners, uh, wanting to see more input from District Four as well. Uh, this is also based on metrics we are seeing. Uh, click through rates for District Four, uh, regarding our digital ads were eight hundred and seven compared to District One at one thousand two hundred and fifty-six. The average click through for the entirety of the campaign is point one nine percent. And according to our online ad vendor, the average click rate or CTR, as they're called, for a similar campaign to create awareness for an event or an issue is typically between point zero six percent to point zero eight percent uh, compared to ours at a higher rate of point one nine percent. Based on the surveys received, District Four had the least amount of surveys submitted, as you'll see later in the metrics report, which is relative to the participation. Regarding District One, uh, for the location, we're recommending uh, looking into surplus training community college if they're available. Supplies from community colleges, many of you know, is a trusted partner in the community with presence in multiple District One communities uh, such as campuses in San Ysidro, Chilwellston, National City. This also supports the chair's desire to engage student populations. Uh, regarding District Four for location, we're looking at venues that are more central uh, such as in Linda Vista, including the Bay Side Community Center uh, and perhaps Mission Valley Library as an example. Uh, please bear in mind the limitations to certain facilities with regard to timing of the evening, as we've seen in the past. Regarding the times uh, associated with this, uh, we are recommending uh, these two meetings be moved to five PM with the regular IRC meeting occurring ahead of the public hearing in its entirety, if at all possible. Uh, that would be moving from twelve PM to five PM to accommodate members of the public uh, who worked during the day, as noted uh, by many commissioners. Uh, and um, moving the time from five thirty to six PM, uh, from six PM to five PM to accommodate for increased public comment and additional presentation content by, you know, fa- flow analytics to include maps, et cetera. Uh, and we'll make every effort to ensure and secure venues, uh, that will allow late end times, a minimum of ten PM, uh, if not later. Uh, so those are our recommendations um, from page nine from the uh, public hearing outreach plan. Entertain any questions? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Jason. Um, I think in this case, I'm going to recommend again that we hear from the public first, unless there's objection. Very good. David, are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Baim. We did not receive any requests in advance of today's meeting, but if anyone would like to address the commission on this item, we'd welcome your comments. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Baim.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, as this is a public, a- a- as this is an action item, um, we'll need a motion before we have any further discussion. Is there a motion to approve the outreach plan for draft map public hearings from ABASD as included in this agenda item? Co-Vice Chair Caterina?
I would like to um, have a discussion about um, perhaps having a meeting in District Two instead of District One.
It's, it's fine, but we, first, we need a motion to approve the outreach plan as included with the agenda materials, and then we can go into any changes. Do we have any motion? Commissioner Chen, thank you. Second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Diaz, thank you very much. Uh, Co-Vice Chair Caterina, do you want to continue?
Uh, yeah, that's okay. Um, thank you, Jason, and um, I, I, I like your analysis. Um, but looking at the complete list of meetings that were presented in our agenda package, um, at the forward, you know, with the, at the meetings coming up, um, we do have a lot of meetings in District Four, but I think it's very important to have um, to have one of our draft map public hearings in District Four. And, and I think we have had two meetings in District One, I think are if, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Benita meeting uh, was in District One and also the general meeting that we had in Spring Valley was also in District One. So um, when you look at it that way, um, it does put District Two with only one meeting. And we did get quite a few questions from commissioners while we were doing our pre-mapping hearings about having uh, meetings in a rural area and had discussed perhaps um, looking at um, uh, a venue in a tribal nation, um, uh, maybe uh, Saquon or Viejas. And um, that would be my um, it level of interest um, in, in looking towards um, having, having a meeting in District Two.
Not seeing other commissioners. Let me ask, Jason, do you want to respond to that?
Uh, thank you, Chair and Co-Vice Chair Caterina. Uh, we could obviously entertain uh, moving this at the will of the commission. Um, we would have to do a little bit of shuffling and, and maybe make a pivot and recommend. Um, you know, perhaps the eleven-one meeting, you know, could be uh, in District Four, and then we could potentially do um, the twelve-two meeting in District Two. Uh, and we would reach out to our tribal contacts, such as Saquon, BS, and Brona. Um, I think something to keep in mind, uh, you know, as we know, the space um, at some of their facilities is very limited as they're booking up for the fall and holiday events. So that's something to keep in mind. Um, if I could, um, perhaps somebody, just to make sure, um, we're correct on the Spring Valley, I believe is District Two. If that could, if that could be confirmed, I just want to make sure that we're not providing the wrong information here.
This is Barbara. That's my understanding. I actually am double checking the district map right now just to, to, to confirm, but uh, that's my understanding that it's District Two. We're double checking the exact zip code just to ensure that.
Okay, it was hard to tell.
Okay, thank you, Barbara. We'll, we'll get back to that and we'll continue with discussion. I have Co-Vice Chair Garcia and then Commissioner Diaz.
So my, my comment has to do with um, the fact that when I look at the meetings um, starting on October seventh and through December fifteenth. Um, I count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven uh, meetings that are basically south of eight because our regular meetings will be um, held at the County Administration Center. And then um, we're looking at other meetings that, you know, look like they're going to be south of eight. And um, I just uh, out of, out of fairness, I, I would like to see actually one of those public hearings be held uh, north of eight and even perhaps north of the fifty-two or the fifty-six for those um, residents who live in fabled North County.
Thank you. Commissioner Diaz?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about um, hours that we dedicate to these meetings and then really having our regular meeting and our public input meeting together in the same day, I don't think that's a great idea at all. I think these meetings should be just dedicated to the public input. Um, and then I don't know if there's flexibility, uh, Chair Baim, but I would love to have our regular business meetings, like we're conducting this business meeting um, as a special meeting, um, separate.
Unfortunately, uh, unfortunately, I'm, I'm going to keep focused on the agenda and the motion that was made. The motion that was made was to discuss the two public hearings. So I want, and the outreach plan. And I very much want to make sure commissioners are not just attending to that one aspect of the outreach plan. I appreciate Jason focusing on that.
I have multiple questions.
Right. So right now, though, I'd like to focus the comments solely on reasons for having the outreach plan approved or adjusted, including the suggestion on where to have the two public hearings and relevant, but hopefully brief comments, because we're going to have to have a further discussion about the overall schedule. Commissioner Diaz, I think your point on merged meetings is completely valid and I appreciate it. I just don't want us to have too much of a discussion of that right now because we're going to have to have it when we get to agenda item four, assuming we get to that tonight. So please continue. I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. I, I was reviewing the scope of work um, a little bit, and this ties in directly to the plan. Um, if we recall from the scope of work, um, it includes in, um, I have it referenced here, four point two point one to four point two point two, that there would be provided with a trainings or informational events, educational events. Um, and these trainings shall include but not be limited to an overview of redistricting process, applicable state federal learning rights laws, and how to provide the written oral testimony at public meetings. I provided an example um, of, of what that looks like um, to our point, point of contact. And I wanted, or you know, just as we're walking through, because when we're envisioning we're walking through, because when we're envisioning this as meetings, right, we need to have, you know, we're talking about the draft map meetings, right? But there was other things contemplated in there that I wanted to just emphasize, didn't make it into the plan, and I wanted to understand why. If there's any efforts or additional outreach and our special, I guess, you know, as it's worded, contractors shall work with the I R C and community partners to identify additional outreach efforts and our special public hearing to reach target audiences. So it seems to me that I would, I would love something included in that plan, and I've been trying to advocate for that, and and so, I mean, I will go ahead and approve the plan as, as we're presented with very little information, but I will, I would want to encourage all the commissioners to read, go back to the scope of work and read it thoroughly and ensure that the things are being met by our contractor and, and how that ties into the, you know, I know we were want to schedule these meetings right away, and that's great. We're talking about the schedule, but let us also keep in mind what we asked our contractor to do. And also, again, the hours of the meetings are really important, and I like the fact that they incorporated our, our evening hours for people that work full time. But again, it's, it's very draining for the public to have, you know, our, our business and our public input meetings together. So I know, you know, I know you want that discussed on item four, but this ties in directly to the plan. Because we're talking about venues and hours, and in the selection of venues, I want to know from our contractor, is there any way that we could have like a venue that has flexible hours? Because it seems like we've got cut off and we were pressed for time at the other venues, and I just wanted some background on that to understand why that happened. And in this, in moving forward, how can we mitigate for that? Thank you very much for giving the time. I apologize for all of the comments, but I, I think it's just, it ties directly back to the plan that we're discussing. Thank you.
And no apologies necessary. I thought those were perfectly sanguine remarks for this agenda item. Since I only have two other commissioners willing to talk right now, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to give Jason and the single point of contact commissioner servant a chance to address what Commissioner Diaz just said. So seeing no objection, let me turn first to Jason and then to Commissioner Servant.
Thank you, Chair Bane. Commissioner Diaz, regarding the, the last item for discussion or the question regarding venue selection. We had originally proposed, I believe, initially in our discussions, that we would have either the community, the County Administration Center or the County Operations Center, because of the timing associated with it, what allows to go into later in the evening, there are some places where we won't have additional security past a certain hour. You know, if it's a public facility, there are certain limitations associated with it. Certain private venues might have more ability for us to have timing later, so there's just so many factors that come into play as we're entertaining every single one of these venues that include, you know, if it's a nonprofit that's operating it, maybe they don't have as much staff. Obviously during COVID, we've seen a reduction of hours and personnel at most facilities. We tend to like the big places that have either built-in staffing or people who have certain capacity at a certain hour. I know it's even been discussed with I R C staff and council as well to even go, you know, obviously as latest until midnight, possibly for some of these evening meetings going later. So we've entertained as many options as we can, and I try to provide facilities that would give us that flexibility, knowing that these can go late into the evening. But that does come with some limitations and does narrow our field quite a bit more to making sure that we have, let's say it's in one area, but you want a certain facility, but all these other factors associated with it. So there are a number of factors, but we, we are certainly trying our best to making sure that if we secure a venue, it gives us the most options available.
Thank you, Commissioner Servant.
I don't have anything to add to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the list I have at the moment is Commissioner Larson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia, and then Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Larson, please.
Okay, well, first of all, I agree totally with what Commissioner Diaz just said, and I, I support what she wants to accomplish. Secondly, I don't feel it's a good idea to combine business meetings and the public hearings. I don't think we have adequate time to do either one, and the last couple, I think, have not worked out well at all due to time constraints of the venue we were in. Secondly, I'd like to see District Four west of the I five be considered. And there are places I could suggest that do not have the time constraints in this area. So I'd, I'd work with Jason or whoever to try to make that happen. That's it.
Thank you very much for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Commissioner Pons.
Please allow Commissioner Pons to go before me since I've already asked a question. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And before I do, Commissioner Hanson, was that a request to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, so Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Hanson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Commissioner Pons.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. I concur with Commissioner Diaz, and I brought up the last meeting that I thought if we joined the public hearing meetings with the regular scheduled meetings, there just wouldn't be enough time to do both. And that goes to the issue of the scheduling and keeping in conjunction with what you want us to vote on, Chair Bane. I think my recommendation is that we should separate the public hearings with regular meetings.
Very good. Thank you for that. Commissioner Hanson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
My comment was that if you substitute the two meetings that are at the County Administration Building with, for ones where there's draft map public hearings, people in that building are going to come there and they're going to want to talk about the map, given the date and given the timeframe. And so I don't think we can count those as district meetings for the public.
Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia, then Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
So I also want to agree with Commissioner Diaz and Pons and Larson, and I, I noticed that we do have draft map and I R C special meeting or reschedule regular meeting, and I think they should just be public hearings. And I guess I would like to understand if, for these public hearings, can we, can, can you explain what would happen if we have a venue and we have a hard stop at ten? And we still have, we haven't completed the meeting. What would happen? Can someone answer that? Or are we going to be sure that that, that we're going to avoid that happening? In other words, we're going to have a venue that we're not going to be kicked out of at a certain time?
Well, let me point out one option that would happen before turning to Jason. The time limit for speakers is strictly a decision for the chair. And if the speaker's list that we have ahead of the meeting creates that kind of problem, then my initial reaction is going to be, we're going to have to limit the amount of time for each speaker, to be fair. Now, we have an issue there, and I'm going to turn to, I know Commissioner Inman may speak on this, and we may have council speak on this, on quote unquote, relative equity for time limits, but it is certainly possible, and I certainly have seen it in a number of public meetings throughout the county, that one meeting may have one time limit for speakers and another meeting may have another time limit for speakers. The issue comes, becomes very important, though, with regard to public hearings because of the specific requirements for that. Before I turn, I give Jason a chance to speak, Commissioner Inman, your point relevant directly to this, so please go ahead.
Yes, so we've been talking about this very issue, and Marguerite, I know, has comments to it, but we're putting together a plan on how to conduct these public hearing meetings with the notion of, you know, we're taking too much time. So there is a plan in place in terms of going to the end of a meeting, like eight o'clock, we need to get out. Marguerite can chime in here, but we can adjourn a meeting with a continuation the next day. So when you hit eight o'clock, you say, we got to adjourn the meeting, it will continue tomorrow, starting at whatever. And so there is a part, you know, there is a way to adjourn a meeting when you, when you hit a certain time limit and then pick it up at that very spot the next day. So that's one way to deal with it. The other way is we're definitely trying to put in place a process that limits, as Chair Bane said, the amount of time, not necessarily the public. We're actually going to try to throttle the commissioners to a certain extent, not, not, not figuratively throttle the commissioners in certain ways. And if I made just one other comment, these public, these draft map public hearings, we're going to be taking testimony on maps at every meeting that we have. Right? So these draft map public hearings are only different from a regular meeting in that they require an agenda seven days in advance of the meeting. And it's, and then we're going to take public testimony in those meetings. We're going to have regular meetings where we take testimony on draft maps. So it's not just during the draft map public hearings and so on stuff there.
Thank you. Marguerite, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, I wanted to mention another way to deal with the hard stop at the end and remind our discussion, the reason to have a meeting connected with the public hearing is to give the commission the option at the close of the public hearing to take some action and to give some instruction to your consultants without an agenda item allowing you to discuss changes and instruct that they be made in the map. You can't do anything at the public hearing. So that's the rationale, all right? To control that, the agenda item for the meeting that is connected with the public hearing should be a single agenda item, and that is discussion and possible action on map amendments or map development. So it would not be an agenda like this, where you are discussing myriad important items. The purpose of that is to give you flexibility to act, so that you don't have to reconvene some days later. So that's the rationale. Enough said. Completely up to you. We can proceed with a joint. We can separate them. Good discussion.
But I want to confirm from both of you before we move further. The idea then is the time issue will in effect take care of itself, because the only agenda on the meeting joined to the public hearing would be to review public comment and act on it. Now, if that discussion was extensive and intensive, which I would say there's certainly a chance of that happening, then we could theoretically face a time crunch, or as Commissioner Inman described, the prospect, which would be a considerable demand on commissioners' time to extend to the next day, correct?
Yes, you can adjourn, and I have to check my facts on this, but you can adjourn to a time certain.
Right.
I believe it is within five days. So it doesn't have to be the immediate day after you simply, oh, ten o'clock, they're turning off the lights. Everybody get out your calendar. Can we all get together virtually on X, and you continue your meeting?
And I really, really want to avoid steering the commission one way or the other on this, but I do want to point out, part of the balance will be, how difficult will that procedure be for commissioners? And how diff, as opposed to a process where if we separate meetings from the public hearings completely, we have to find times with all the legal requirements we have for times to hold the meetings that enables us to get the business done, particularly on map guidance. I'm open on that, but I certainly think it's fair to say there's complexity. Now, we are wandering, and I'm contributing to this dangerously close to what we should be doing under Agenda Item Four. So again, I'll ask, because in approving, as I see Agenda Item Five and approving the outreach plan, we are only approving whatever level of detail is in the outreach plan on location and time for meetings. We can revisit the issue of joint meetings or not, but since we are now dealing with this, I'll ask commissioners to bear that in mind while understanding, we cannot write into the outreach plan itself whether or not a public hearing will be handled, will be held with a regular or special meeting. That second question has to be discussed as part of Agenda Item Four. All right? I had Co-Vice Chair Katerina on my list. Do you still want to speak, or was that withdrawn?
I, I really wanted to hear from Ken and Marguerite, and I'm glad that they both chimed in. I think, I think it's important to note that there was quite a bit of discussion amongst the, the point of contacts and council and staff and, and a meeting where we talked with Flo about their proposed schedule, which we approved. And, and the reason I bring that up is I, I really just want everyone to understand how important it is to make sure we get this right for these draft map hearings. And, and we do, we do need to consider that we may be somewhere for a long time discussing and listening to public comment and then having potentially, again, a regular meeting afterwards. So, you know, it really is, it really is important to pick the right places and pick, pick the right time so that we can give A B A S D the direction they need to start planning, and that's, that's all I have.
All right.
Chair Bane?
Yes, Barbara, please.
Sorry, I was raising my hand, but I wasn't sure if you could see me. Just because the question came up, I wanted to confirm. We've double, triple checked, and the Spring Valley location is indeed in D two.
And I apologize for contributing any confusion on that, because I know Spring Valley enough to know it's, it's got several different cuts and bobs, so my apologies as well. All right. Jason, I want to ask one key clarifying question before we move to a vote, because I don't have any more speakers. What you are looking for with regard to the public hearings today is the guidance that you've got in the outreach plan as it currently stands, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If we move forward with the current motion, then can we bring up the page, Jason, that you had? The page nine, I believe it was.
With I R C staff, how's that?
All right, I R C staff, thank you, Barbara.
We're bringing up that right now. Thank you.
Okay, so right now, as far as meeting location and times would go, this is what would be being approved. And in no way do I want to discount the comments by Commissioners Diaz, Pons, and others about the rest of the outreach plan. And Commissioner Diaz, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll thank you greatly for the agreement to approve in principle. I wholeheartedly agree. There's a lot more to do on public outreach in connection with where we are. And I think we'll be talking about that both later tonight and in means to come. Thank you for making that point. Really appreciate it. All right, so I'm about to take this page down unless anyone wants it to remain up. Very good. Thank you, staff. Co-Vice Chair Katerina, and then we'll move to a vote.
I just wanted to withdraw my request to move to District Two, since, since Spring Valley is in District Two already.
Very good. All right, so we now move to the motion to approve the outreach plan for draft map public hearings from A B A S D as included with the agenda materials. Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
So I'm just curious, we're voting on D one and D four? Is that what we're saying?
We want, well, I, I'm sorry, that, and I, I was negligent in that. Yes, that is what is currently in the plan, failing any kind of amended or contrary motion to that effect.
Well, I, I still believe that what we have is a set of meetings in, in October, November, and early December that disadvantage our residents in North County.
Okay, right now, though, yeah, I, I understand that. Right now, though, it would need to, what we would need is either a discussion on that point under Agenda Item Four that we'll, we'll hopefully move to next, or if Or if you want to make an amendment to the outreach plan motion, that would specifically change something on one of those locations. Is that the motion you're pursuing or do you want to have the discussion as part of the broader discussion?
No, I think one of those public hearings uh need, you know, we, there, there needs to be a north-south or an east-west, and I, I'm not sure I'm seeing that with the district.
Okay, I, yeah, I, I understand, but uh I need a motion with some degree of specificity on what um you'd like to replace, and then we'll see if it can go forward as a friendly motion or not.
Does it make sense to have a discussion about what, about why we have picked location south of the eight versus not?
With regard to the public hearings, yes. And um I'll reserve the right to call on you, Commissioner Servin, as SPOC, and Jason as the contractor representative. If you want to respond to those concerns, please go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll let Jason, I'll defer to Jason for that.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, it, it was pretty similar to our comments mentioned before regarding, I think District Four was uh the main point of contention in previous meetings and as we received from the commissioners and um, and you'll see from uh our presentation on a subsequent item here uh this evening for our metrics and outreach report. Um, District Four was certainly a priority item in terms of engagement and participation. Um, and then District One, uh, in terms of that community, we'd also allowed those comments previously uh before. So we made the decision on District One and District Four based on um, a number of factors, mostly in terms of engagement um and participation um regarding uh the previous meetings to make sure that everybody was accounted for. That also included uh that we had had, as stated earlier, uh, two meetings in each of the other districts with the exception of District One and District Four, and that was our rationale.
Commissioner Pons, and then I'll come back to Co-Vice Chair Garcia to see if she wants to make a motion. And then we're going to vote either on a motion to change it or a motion to approve it. Commissioner Pons.
Uh, yes, this comment goes Commissioner Garcia. If in the meeting location it did not include the districts as it was brought up earlier, if it just said location and the location of District One and District Four sort of bifurcated Kent, uh San Diego County, would that be appropriate? Because I think we're getting hung up on the districts. This is not about the districts. It's more about having the meetings north of San Diego County and then south of San Diego County. So is, should we just erase that meeting location where it says District One and District Four and just put in the location? And that could sort of uh tamp down the discussion about districts uh not being treated fairly? Just a question.
Before we go further on that, I, I want to reengage Jason on uh if we remove that exactly that location information, even if it's just districts. Um, how much is that an inhibiting factor for you to continue working?
I was really more in question of timing and making sure that we could secure the venue in a timely fashion and be able to produce outreach materials and um get that engagement early on or as early as possible for that. Um, I would also venture to say relative to Commissioner Pons' comment and, and perhaps eh eh, I don't want to throw wrench in here anymore. If, if the meeting was at five o'clock and that created another issue in terms of location, we need to make sure that we're ensuring that those venues can accommodate a later time if the public comment does go later. Um, of course, we'll be amenable to, um, as Marguerite had mentioned um before regarding if we're able to continue the meetings um and subsequent ones for making sure that all public comments are heard. Um, but you know, we'd of course be amenable to it, but uh bear in mind that does include additional factors in terms of the timing. So we just want to make sure that um you're hearing it upfront that we're making sure that, you know, if there is a change in it that we um just as expediently as possible following this, try to secure those, those venues as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Um, so to respond to Commissioner Pons, um, yes, I think that um if we just, if it worked for A B A S D to just get direction on um, you know, sort of relative region, south San Diego and more central or north San Diego, that would work for me. I don't, I, I wasn't clear that, that, that that kind of direction was helpful to A B A S D, but um um, that would work for me.
That's great. I mean, this is an issue of perception and perception matters. And I think if we remove District Ones and District Four and focus on the location relative to the county of San Diego, that would help all of us, including the public.
Okay, um, to avoid a lengthy conversation on verbiage, would the commission be willing to accept that we will amend the outreach plan to remove the specific location references, the D one and D four? And that A B A S D will proceed with the guidance to hold one public hearing in north, i- in the northern part of San Diego County and one in the southern part of San Diego County. I'm just tabling that as a ways to go as simply as possible. Commissioner Dustall.
Um, I'm just, I just want to ask about procedure because we have a, a motion and a second. And I was wondering, should we vote or, because it wasn't clear to me if there's more than one person that.
I'm, right, I, I'm entertaining this because I see, oh, an issue that may help us with the discussion or our next agenda item, but I, I agree, we shouldn't be continuing the discussion. So thank you for that. Commissioner Hanson.
Get back to the suggested change. I would object to that strongly because we have to look at where we have already had meetings and where we have not. And the cumulative effect of how those meetings were originally very poorly attended and there have been more attendance as time has gone on. But not one of those district, those meetings has been in District Four anywhere but the far eastern cent part of the county. Not where the concentration of population is at all.
Okay.
So if you say north or south, then that's going to lead to central area out.
Fair enough, and thank you for that, and thank you, Commissioner Dustall as well. So we will go back to the original motion. I will respectfully ask Commissioners to vote on the existing outreach plan. And keep in mind that there will be discussion either, in, either in the next agenda item we take up or sometime shortly on other scheduled events we need to do. But for right now, we do have a motion before us to approve the outreach plan as presented in the agenda materials. David, would you please call the role, uh, Co-Vice Chair Garcia, please?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna ask if I were to um make another motion, if my motion, I can't remember, would my motion and I were to get a second, would my motion be considered first or would the original, a substitute motion?
We would have to have a substitute motion and vote on whatever was in that motion. And then a subsequent vote on the outreach plan that, that would incorporate the results of the previous vote.
Well, let, let me try it then. I, I, I'd like to move that we um approve the outreach plan with the um public hearings um with, with one public hearing held um in south San Diego, specifically in District Four. And a second meeting to be held um in any district um that, but that is located eh, in a more northern part, sort of north of fifty-two or fifty-six in San Diego County.
Um.
So in other words, I'm just kind of revising that, that. I'm, I'm responding to, to Commissioner Hanson, who, who, eh, eh, and I, and I'm, I'm not opposed to having one, one meeting in south of San Diego, and we can specify that it needs to be in District Four.
Can we take a vote on the original motion?
I think I, yeah, I, I really think we'll have to.
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Another one. Okay, very good. Thank you for that.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so, back to the original motion to approve the outreach plan as included in the agenda materials. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Bam. Commissioner Brown.
Nay.
Commissioner Servin. Commissioner Servin, I didn't hear you vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this is on the plan as presented?
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, I.
Commissioner Pons.
Nay.
Chair Bam.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Kugliak.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Nay.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dustal.
Aye.
Motion passes with Commissioners Brown, Pons, and Garcia voting no. All other Commissioners being present and voting aye. Their vote is eleven to three.
Thank you very much, David. Thank you, Commissioners, and I really do mean thank you to each Commissioner because it was an important discussion. And uh Commissioner Servin and Jason, wearing your uh SPOC and contract rights respectively, I would ask you to bear in mind the comments earlier in the discussion from Commissioner Diaz and Commissioner Pons and others um on overall outreach. I know you're already working on that, but I did one recorded for the record. Okay. Since the motion on ta- tabling Agenda Item Four was originally to return to it now, I'll now ask for a motion that is required for us to turn to Agenda Item Four to bring up Agenda Item Four again as our next item for discussion.
So moved.
So moved.
Commissioner Brown, second, sorry, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, good. Okay. So uh David, could we have a motion, a vote on the motion to bring Agenda Item Four to the floor?
Thank you, Chair Bam. This is a motion to take the item from the table. Commissioner Katerina.
Aye.
Commissioner Pons.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Larson.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Chen.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner, uh Chair Bam.
Aye.
Commissioner Inman.
Aye.
Commissioner Servin.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Russ.
Aye.
Commissioner Kugliak.
Aye.
Commissioner Dustal.
Aye.
Chair Bam, that motion passes unanimously with all Commissioners being present and voting aye.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, with your permission, I'm going to just turn to where we were when uh we left this agenda item, which is a presentation by our General Counsel, Margarita Leoni, followed by a presentation by Staff Lead Barbara Jimenez. So not seeing any objection. Marguerite, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Um, this is a complex item. Let me get a picture here. It's a complex item. It has to do with uh your regular meeting schedule. It also has to do with the timeline. And it also has to do with virtual versus in-person meetings. Uh, correct me if my, I'm wrong, Chair Bam, there will be three separate motions. So this is.
That's our current plan, but I will follow the commission's will on it. Uh, but as I hinted before, it seems to me that will be the smoothest way to handle it, so.
I'm going to address it in three separate uh buckets so that we eh don't have them, eh, eh, don't, don't have them confused. The first one is, is that um public bodies are required to set regular meeting schedules, and regular meeting simply means what it means. Uh, regular times, and you are the second and fourth Thursday generally. Uh, same location and regular times. And when, and that schedule is required to be adopted by resolution or motion, which you did, you did it very early on. We had a couple of changes and every time appropriately you voted to make the change in the regular meeting schedule. So as part of the timeline, there is a change of a regular meeting. And that's from October twenty-eighth to November one. So that would be a change in your regular meeting schedule. And you are being asked to approve that, amend, amend your schedule formally so that the public knows about that change. Now.
Marguerite, let me just, let me just clarify, that is already in the approved September ninth plan. It's simply that we have to make a formal decision because it's a regular meeting.
Right, it's already, it's, it, the plan, the timeline was tentatively approved. And that date is in there, and that was a date that was moved from the twenty-eighth, your regular meeting. And that uh was uh slid to November first. All right. So that is the first amending your meeting schedule is number one. The second is a more complex motion, and we've had a lot of discussion already, and that is approval of your timeline. And there are issues out there that you've all discussed. Um, but with regard to that timeline, we have somewhat other considerations. And they are considerations that are in the elections code that require for your public hearings that they be noted seven days ahead of time. And that the maps be included with those two public hearings. So that stretches out the time we need to get uh to the public hearing. Now, one of these potentially may be combined with a regular meeting. It's the opinion of your counsel that the time and location of that particular regular meeting can change because of the requirements of the elections code which override general law. It's specific. They, there, you're supposed to have your hearings different times, different places to get the best participation. So that's the second issue, the timeline. Yes, it flows into your regular schedule, but that's the second issue. Then the third issue is how are we going to get this done? And you've heard talk in your last couple of meetings about A B three, six, one, which is complex and convoluted but will permit you with appropriate findings to continue to meet virtually for your regular meetings. Um, and for any meeting or hearing that isn't required by law. Um, the county is paving the way for all county commissions on this issue by making appropriate findings and passing a resolution that we can build on to permit you to con- continue your view, virtual meetings. And we plan to bring that back to you at your meeting on the seventh. That meeting will be a virtual meeting and you can vote to continue your meetings in the virtual format. This will need to come back to you every thirty days. You have to re-up it every thirty days. But it's a simple motion at that time. Different laws take over at the beginning of next year, but they're not applicable to you. So these are the legal requirements kind of bounding in the discussion you're about to have. And we just wanted to mention those ahead of time because we're going to be discussing meetings and hearings and special meetings and rescheduled meetings. And we just wanted to set the framework. Um, Chair Bam, does that, uh, does that, uh, cover the issues we?
I, I think so. I just want to reinforce as much for our public participants as for Commissioners. In all this, it's still sounds to me, and I'd like just Council's confirmation that we actually are gaining some tools in flexibility and ways to engage the public, which I know remains a top priority. We will have a bit of a challenge as we already saw in the timeline that we approved on September ninth, and as we're about to discuss in making sure we've got the right advanced notices and postings of maps. But all of that is still with the idea of finding the best way to engage the public and gain input and comment on those maps. Is that all fair from your perspective?
Yes, it is.
Good. Okay, sorry to extend the discussion. So with that, we'll, we'll turn to Barbara, please.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I'm going to provide an update on the plan for meeting locations and times um going forward for your consideration. And as noted before, I, I'd really like to thank uh SPOC Inman, um, the IRC staff, Flow Analytics, A B A S D, and Council, just for. and Council, just for the incredible amount of thoughtful effort that's happened behind the scenes to really develop this redistricting timeline for your consideration. As you heard earlier, there's a lot of considerations, and it's really a balancing act, right? So we're considering opportunities for public participation, as you just heard, along with all the different various advanced noticing requirements, both of the Brown Act, the Elections Code, for the different types of meetings that we're considering. Also, just to highlight what was discussed earlier, the time that's needed, not just for the IRC to come to its decisions, but also for Flow and staff to implement your direction and generate and post the new maps and the material. So changes, any changes that are discussed to the dates in the timeline, just a huge consideration is the potential significant impacts both on the time available for Flow, Council, and staff to generate the new maps and materials, to post them for the public and the Commissioners per the legal requirements. And then also, it could impact IRC's decision-making at the subsequent meetings, as you heard. So going back to the IRC meeting on July eighth, I presented the plan where staff had begun to be prepared to begin hosting IRC meetings in person. These are the IRC regular meetings starting in October. In addition, Council had given us the guidance that the regular meetings, as Margarita just mentioned, needed to occur at that same location. So back then, we identified and booked Room three oh two and three oh three of the County Administration Center, which is located downtown. A couple of reasons, due to the unique setup it has for Commissions with the built-in audio and visual equipment. The room at the CAC, as we shared before, can seat fourteen Commissioners on dais, as well as IRC Council staff and the clerk. There's ample seating available for members of the public and a podium for speakers. There's already a large TV screen that's set up to connect with Zoom. There's no cost for use of the room. But as I mentioned before, there will be costs associated for hourly rates for after-hour security for any evening meetings. So the one exception to all the regular meetings being held in that room is the IRC regular meeting that has the draft map public hearing attached to it. And as we just heard, Council stated that that would be appropriate for this meeting to occur at a location other than the CAC because of the public hearing component. Due to the strengths, the considerations and constraints of having the regular meeting occurring in the same location, we wanted to also be responsive to the Commission's request to move meeting locations. And since we're not able to move the regular meetings, we focused on coordinating certain special meetings to incur in other locations. So you, you have a detailed document, and so I just wanted to highlight some of the recommendations for your consideration. Having the October twenty-first meeting at the South Region Liberal Center in National City, which is located in District One, and the December fourteenth meeting at the Connie Operations Center in Kearney Mesa in District Four. In addition, we are recommending that the IRC consider the additional audio/video support from Finest City Entertainment that ABASD currently subcontracts with. This could give the IRC additional cameras, TV monitors for specific mapping meetings, and/or if the facility, the facility doesn't have audiovisual equipment needed. ABSD has already agreed to support this effort with providing this through their subcontractor. Now, a note for October twenty-first and December fourteenth, we are requesting the AV because these meetings will be outside of the CAC. November twelfth, we're requesting because of the live scenario modeling at this meeting. December ninth, we are recommending or requesting your consideration because this meeting will include the adoption of the final map. Enhanced AV could be useful when looking at the maps during the live modeling session or mapping meetings. And again, would be recommended for your consideration for any locations outside of the CAC. The cost for additional AV support from Finest City Entertainment is confirmed to be estimated at fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. The IRC amended budget line item for public outreach does have sufficient capacity to support these costs for the additional AV support. And to, to address the interest from Commissioners about adding Saturday hearings, staff has noted on the schedule a tentative additional draft map public hearing that could occur on a Saturday, eleven-twenty, on November twentieth, at one PM virtually. And I, I do want to note that this is the weekend before Thanksgiving. We looked at other staff dates, and again, going back to the complexities of the timeline and working with Flow and the other considerations. This is the date that we're bringing forward as a, again, just for your consideration, and as a tentative date. We're also suggesting some revisions to the timing of the meeting. Some have stayed the same, aligning with their current regular meeting schedule. So what was already in the original schedule, some have changed to a later time with consideration for ensuring public participation. Again, this is quite complicated, lots going on. We look forward to your feedback and direction so that we can really continue moving forward with securing all the logistical details. Because as we know, these meetings will be here before we know it. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Margarita, as well. Thanks to all who've had input and work on this, because as I think was indicated, it's a true team effort. Because these issues are so complex, and I think Commissioners will want to have everything in mind that they can. Let me ask David first if there are any requests from the public to speak on this Agenda item, and I'll specifically say with regard to the three specific topics that Margarita laid out during the discussion.
Thank you, Chair Bane. We did not receive any requests in advance of today's meeting, but if any member of the public would like to address this item, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this matter, Chair Bane.
Very good. Thank you for that. So, as Margarita mentioned, we do need a motion to discuss these items, but it does seem to me it'll be easiest if we discuss them in three distinct phases. The phases I have in mind are, first, approval of the updated redistricting timeline. That's the heart of the issue. Item two, approval of the revised regular meeting schedule, which would incorporate the revisions from the redistricting timeline. And that's primarily that change in the regular meeting schedule from October twenty-eighth to November first, but could be affected by any other discussion in motion one. And then motion three, approval of an associated contract budget amendment for an estimated fifteen thousand three hundred and twenty dollars to yield the additional audiovisual support that Barbara mentioned in her presentation. So my intention, unless there's objection, there we go, thank you, is to move through those three motions that would enable us to do, I think, motion two and motion three fairly quickly and dispense with the entire Agenda item as efficiently as possible. If that's acceptable, and please leave that up on screen, very good. So I will first call for a motion to approve, this is motion one, to approve the updated restricted, redistricting timeline as included with the Agenda materials. Is there a motion?
Don't move.
Commissioner Chen, second.
Second, Ed.
Commissioner Russ, thank you very much. All right. My suggestion would be then to bring the timeline chart back up that Barbara was discussing. Commissioner Inman, I already had you in mind as someone to call on, so thank you for volunteering. We'll start with him, and of course, other Commissioners, please weigh in if you can by virtual hand, but I'll try to keep the closest eye I can on the picture. Commissioner Inman, please.
Okay, thank you. And again, this timeline is a work of a lot of different players. It's a big jigsaw puzzle to try to put it together. So the dependencies that go across this are, you know, many and complex. But I do have a question about the meeting on this schedule for Saturday, November twentieth, and it's called a draft map public hearing. And does that require seven-day advanced posting of the maps, like the other draft map public hearings? Because if that's the case, I don't believe it's feasible because there's no time for us to do that, or do I misunderstand what that meeting's about?
Barbara, I think it's you, but if I'm looking at the September, at the, the calendar that approved on September ninth, we have a meeting on Friday, November twelfth. That's a regular IRC meeting in which Flow would present second revised draft maps. And then the IRC would react and give Flow instructions on that. And then the calendar that was approved at that point, Flow would submit materials on November twenty-second. So in November twelfth, instruction to Flow, I think Commissioner Inman is saying it would be impossible to turn around maps on the thirteenth, which would be the seven-day notification period for maps. Now, I, I'll ask a question as well that turned to Barbara and Margarita for. Would it theoretically be possible or advisable to use the last round of maps and refer people to the November twelfth discussion in having a Saturday, November twentieth pre-mapping, post-mapping public hearing? I assume that wouldn't make the requirement-
The first part of that meeting on the twentieth is Flow doing a presentation of the draft maps, and-
They would do that as, at a public hearing or on the twelfth?
Yeah, on the twentieth. I mean, the first part of any-
Okay, so that answers that question.
Presentation of the draft maps, and there wouldn't have been sufficient time to create the draft maps.
Okay. So Commissioner, so Commissioner Inman, your point would basically be, if we had a meeting on Saturday, November twentieth, it would not be appropriate to try to make it a public hearing?
No, you could do it. You could have a special meeting, I think.
Right.
If the intent is to have a meeting where the public can provide input on draft maps. I mean, instead of, maybe it's a technicality, maybe I'm-
No, no, it's, it's, no, but it's very important because we want to be clear to the public when we're having a public hearing and when we're having something else, even if it functions for public input. But let me ask a separate question that I promised to quiet down. Without that seven-day requirement, is it, what, what would be the burden on Flow to produce something in time for-
They could do, so they could do it. If it's just a one-day special meeting, they could do it. But then, I know Margarita wants to talk.
Yeah, I don't know whether the chair can see me, but I just wanted to say-
I'm sorry, Margarita, I couldn't. So go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say something that may help move this along. The seven-day notice period only applies to the two statutorily required public hearings.
Very good.
This is an extra.
So as long as we declare the two statutory ones
Right.
to be the November first and December second, we don't have the seven-day requirement for the November twentieth. Very good. And, and Commissioner Diaz is nodding like, I would have told you that if you called on me too. So I will try to do a better job looking at the screen. It is, I apologize for that. So thank you all for that. Thank you, Commissioner, and please go ahead.
Yeah, and so my other comment is on the flip side. If we have a meeting on the twentieth, the, the maps need to be ready for December two. And if you go back, this one does require the seven days, so they need to be posted on Thanksgiving Day, essentially. This one, they need to be posted, which is the twenty-fifth. We have a meeting on the twentieth, which is Saturday. That means we do have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. And then we post on Thanksgiving Day. So is that a sufficient period of time to do the work? Yes. It's Thanksgiving week, so that's my comment. Thank you.
If I can add on that, Chair Bane.
Please, Barbara.
Flow, I, I just, again, lots of folks working behind the scenes to really make this happen with the desire to try and find a Saturday, an additional Saturday one. They, they confirmed that, that they're available, and they'll do whatever they can to, to make this happen. And that's why we put it on here as a tentative. But I, I do want to acknowledge that it's exactly what SPOC Inman talked about, that-
Well, Flow said they could staff a meeting on Saturday. We didn't address the second topic of whether there was anybody in the office on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, so we've noted this as a tentative.
No, but I did, I, I wanted to have that as an illustrative conversation so that Commissioners both understand the amount of discussion that's already gone into this and also be aware of the requirements. So for instance, while Saturday, the twentieth, as just discussed, may be a possibility, Saturday, the thirteenth, coming the day after a regular meeting where maps are going to be discussed, would be extremely difficult to have, well, would be impossible to have anything new from Flow. Just factors to consider, however. All right. I have Commissioner Serbin, Commissioner Diaz, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, Co-Vice Chair Garcia. Let me just ask you, are there any other Commissioners wishing to speak that I'm not seeing hands for? Very good. So we'll proceed with that order. Commissioner Serbin.
Thank you, Chair Bane. I'll defer to, to my fellow Commissioners. I prefer to go last, if that's okay. Thank you.
Fine by me. Thank you. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you very much for putting this presentation together, and I really appreciate the thought that went into the timeline and ensuring the maximum amount of public participation, given our time constraints. And I, I wanted, my question, I don't know if this is appropriate now, but it ties back into the extra cost associated with having this additional special meeting because I thought it was accounted for originally in the budget proposed, but it sounds like this is an additional cost on top of that, so I just wanted some clarification on that piece. And now that we are, you know, we can move towards virtual meetings, and, and that's, you know, great. I, I, you know, I think that opens up more access, but how does that, how, how did that affect the budget for what we're voting on? Are we discussing all three motions at once or each one individually? I guess that's my other question.
That's fine, and it, I should have clarified that upfront. It is certainly appropriate because this is within one Agenda item to discuss any aspect of it, including the budgetary concern. So thank you for that. Yeah, I much prefer that we have that as part of a coherent discussion. Let me ask, I suppose Barbara would be the first person to turn to.
Thank you, Chair. So the, the cost, this additional cost specific to the AV is in fact because of the direction on, on the last meeting was that staff come back with the plan. Staff doesn't have the AV capability if it's outside of the CAC, the County Administration Center. So based on the recommendation and what I was sharing earlier with those specific meetings that have that need to look at those maps and be able to, to display them, our recommendation is that the additional audiovisual support be confirmed or be considered for October twenty-first, November twelfth, December ninth, and December fourteenth.
Okay, but this also, as far as regarding the draft map public hearings, is that already covered in the budget as well?
Yes, it's, it's in, for ABASD, this does not include that as an additional cost. That's already covered under the two draft maps that are in the statement of work currently for ABASD. This is in addition, just because of the, if the staff, county IRC staff were to handle these particular meetings.
And I, I just want to chime in. That's for the two statutorily designed ones, November first and December second. If another draft map public hearing was added, that might have budgetary implications.
So that November twentieth, the tentative meeting, could potentially be an extra cost, is what you're saying?
That's my understanding, and I want to turn Commissioner Inman, it is still Flow's recommendation to have that additional AV support for any meeting where there's intensive map discussion, correct?
Correct. That is correct. Yes.
May I?
Yeah.
Can I clarify something? So because this is a virtual meeting, we did not consider any additional cost for that one as it stands. But you're correct, if it were to be an in-person or any additional, then there would be an additional cost per Flow's recommendation.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Uh, co vice chair Katerina.
Hi, um, so I want to talk a little bit about the November twentieth meeting. Um, you know, we have, as I mentioned earlier, when staff and flow and council and ABA SD met to discuss uh, the additional AV needs that were needed and discuss the timeline that was proved on September ninth. Um, one of the issues we talked about was that these draft map hearings need to have multiple cameras. They need to have physical maps printed so people can see the maps. So I have an issue, well, first I have an issue with the fact that there's a meeting on Saturday, November twentieth. And secondly, I have an issue with the fact that it needs to be, in my mind, based on Flo's recommendations, it needs to be an in-person meeting so people can see the maps and we can have multiple cameras available. Um, and I think a virtual meeting, it seems like it is um, an easy answer to this problem, but to me, it causes more issues. Uh, my second, my second issue is, so, so to me, it seems like we, we do need to have additional AV for that meeting if we decide to have it. Um, secondly, I would like to know uh, what is the estimated cost for the evening meetings for extra security at the county buildings? I think this is an important part of our decision making as we look at the time for our, our meetings that are coming up, and we know we're going to have to pay extra for security um, in the evenings. So those are two things um, I, I would like to um, get, get some more feedback from. Um, I also encourage every commissioner, if you have an opinion, please say it, people listen to you. Staff listens to you, and if we only have one or two people speaking and no one else, then sometimes there's assumptions made that this is the will of the commission, when perhaps it isn't, perhaps it is, we don't know. But I do encourage everyone, I know a lot of people don't speak up, but I do encourage everyone, if you have an opinion, please speak up. It's, it's important that your voice is heard too.
Thank you for that, and I couldn't agree more. Um, let me then say, if I'm keeping my order correct and respecting Commissioner Servant's request, I have co vice chair Garcia, then Commissioner Krugliak, then Commissioner Servant, co vice chair Garcia.
Um, I'm gonna hold off for now.
Very good, Commissioner Krugliak.
Um, for the record, I'd raise my hand before Commissioner Katerina.
I apologize.
Made that comment, um, no, 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 not before Commissioner Katerina, just before the uh, plea for speakers. Um, so I, I just want to echo what she says, that I don't see the purpose of the November twentieth meeting, given that it's virtual. I don't see too much difference between uh, people calling into a virtual meeting versus submitting a virtual comment. Uh, that would be effectively the exact same thing, it's, it's all virtual, and if they can do one virtually, presumably they can do the other virtually as well. Also, uh, given the fact that we wouldn't have a new uh, map, there's basically nothing additional for them to comment on compared to what they would be commenting on either on the twelfth or the second, or presumably just the twelfth. Um, so I don't really see a purpose for that one. Um, also not com- um, I'm also not completely clear about what is needed. What, what exactly we have that's so um, pressing that we have, need to basically have um, four meetings, four weeks in a row. Um, I, I'm just, it's a lot, um, especially given that the first map isn't going to be ready for review until November. Um, I get that October is busy, but I'm not sure we need four meetings for that. So those are just um, just my comments on it.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, if I see the order correctly, Commissioner Dostal, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Inman, Commissioner Servant. So Commissioner Dostal, please.
Thank you, I just want to agree with everything Commissioner Krugliak just said.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, co vice chair Garcia.
Um, want to weigh in on the November twentieth meeting, I also, I, I appreciate um, that, I think that meeting was added because it was um, uh, there were voiced concerns about Saturday meetings. Um, and so I think that was added, but I don't, I don't think that really um, helps very much. And certainly Commissioner Inman has made it clear that it will be a difficult um, uh, meeting to put together for flow. I'm wondering if the Friday, November twelfth meeting, which is an IRC, it's listed here as an IRC regular meeting. It's on Friday, November twelfth, moved to Friday because of the Veterans Day holiday. If that's a, a meeting that we might be able to slip to Saturday, November thirteenth. Um, on that meeting, um, we, uh, according to the timeline that I have, this is when flow is going to be presenting a report summarizing all the public input from all sources, including public maps. They're going to present springboard maps pictorially depicting public input and the coys received to date. Um, and it will, you know, be um, in addition to whatever regular business that we have to uh, conduct, will be probably a meeting that will be of great interest to the public. And um, I am a little bit concerned that we don't have any meetings on, on a weekend, for this entire period. So just wondering about the possibility of slipping that one to one day. Um, it seems like it wouldn't have a tremendous impact on the timeline. Um, and then I, to respond to uh, Commissioner Dostal and Commissioner Krugliak, you know, so we have that uh, in our, I'm sorry, I was looking at, um, I was looking at the wrong one. Fri- Friday, November twelfth is um, uh, a meeting when it's second revised draft maps, live draft maps, um, life scenario modeling. Um, so it's, it's a big, a big meeting that Friday, November twelfth, slipping to the thirteenth, I'm sorry, I was reading the wrong thing. Um, but in October, that, that October seventh meeting was the one I was just uh, describing. So the springboard maps is on October seventh, on October fourteenth, we get the RPV study. Um, and on October twenty first, um, we get the first draft map. So I think that's the reason why we have all those meetings scheduled in October, there's kind of a lot of things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, um. Let me turn, I, I'm gonna s- suggest changing, or, I'm gonna take the order as follows. Commissioner Diaz, then Commissioner Servant, then Commissioner Inman. Uh, because I think some of these questions need to, uh, to be answered from his perspective. So with that, Commissioner Diaz.
Um, I, I think I would like to hear from Commissioner Inman, if, if he's intending to respond to Commissioner Garcia's, because it might be my, a similar question I have about that.
Very good, before that, Commissioner Servant.
Uh, thank you Chair, so I think what I just heard our council advise is that by order of the governor and the legislature, there's now an opportunity to con- to continue conducting strictly remote hearings. Um, I know we've been discussing where to have these hearings, but it seems like we're having these challenges as to like, oh, can we find a place that will be able to accommodate us for the time and all this? Um, is it worth talking about whether we want to have more virtual hearings, number one? Um, I'm just suggesting it's, it's, it's just an observation, I don't know what, one way or another, whether I, wh- whether I feel strongly about it or not, I'm just wondering what, if there's any, any um, thought in the commission for that. And um, uh, I forgot what my other, my other thought was, but um, I'll, I'll go back to it if, if I remember, but I, I guess I was just, my, my first thought was, was that.
Very good, and, and happy to entertain if it comes back to you, um, Commissioner Inman.
Yes, thank you, so uh, Commissioner Garcia hit the nail on the head with what you said. Uh, the reason we have those meetings coming in October is because if you, uh, again, look at the timeline, we are starting to look at maps, the first time I look at maps is not that first draft map public hearing, that's actually going to be about the third time we're looking at maps, it's just the first one that's required by the statute. And so that's a public hearing that satisfies a statute requirement. Um, we are looking at maps starting on October seventh, we're getting the springboards, which aren't draft maps, but it's the beginning of the process, and then to keep things moving and to give the public as well as the IRC as much time as possible to watch the evolution and to participate in the evolution of maps, that's why we're having uh, the sequence of meetings that we have. Um, otherwise, you know, if we did not have those meetings in October, and the first time we actually looked at draft maps was on uh, November, uh, November one, uh, you know, we would only get into an iteration of maybe two times on the maps. We're getting uh, probably, uh, I guess I didn't count exactly at least four uh, times to iterate on these maps with the way the schedule is laid out. Two of those are public hearings specifically, but we are looking at maps throughout this process on a weekly basis. And I also, um, you know, I'm okay if we want to leave the tentative next to November twentieth. Um, maybe we will need a meeting that week, but you know, we don't know where we're going to be. And if we need a meeting the week of Thanksgiving, we need a meeting the week of Thanksgiving, you know, uh, that's just the way it goes. So I'm okay with leaving the tentative there, but it is going to be very challenging um, uh, to, uh, to have a meeting there and then take action on what comes out of that meeting. Uh, it will be challenging, but feasible, yes, challenging. Uh, yes, that's, uh, those are my comments, thank you Chair Bane.
Sure, but Commissioner Inman, before you go, um, do you have any specific reaction to co vice chair Garcia's suggestion to move the meeting on the twelfth?
Oh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I was going to comment on that, yes. Uh, if we wanted to have a meeting on Saturday, that would be the one to move, that November twelfth meeting to uh, Saturday, the thirteenth, it doesn't do anything to the schedule, that would be perfectly fine, yes.
And I'm, I'm not trying to steer things in one direction or another, but as far as you're concerned and Flo is concerned, that meeting could happen in any location with sufficient audio visual support.
Correct, that's right.
Okay, very good, okay. Um, so I have Commissioner Diaz and then Commissioner Krugliak, Commissioner Diaz, please.
Thank you so much for that clarification, Commissioner Inman, um. I actually don't have any problem with the current schedule as it's presented, um, even with the tentative uh, date for a Saturday, I think I was one of the commissioners that brought up the need to have more Saturday meetings. So I really appreciate that that was contemplated and that we have um, the capacity to do that. Um, and so I'm, I'm just, uh, you know, even if, if we do need to allocate a little bit more funding for that, like, as, as was stated earlier, um, I think this is in the public's best interest to have more opportunities to participate. Um, you know, and um, we've had great participation, I would say, virtually, a more, that I've seen in the last meetings and also in person, so I mean, um, I guess our goal really is to get as much input as possible here, and, and I, I don't have any qualms about moving forward with this particular schedule that's, that's presented. In addition to um, the budget for it.
Thank you for that, thanks, great summary, appreciate that, uh, Commissioner Krugliak and then Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you, um, I mean, I would just simply say that um, I don't know that springboard maps, which are available, like it says, they're going to be posted to the public, they're, they're available, they're presumably going to be listed under the district scenario modeler. I don't know that um, those need an entire meeting, they're going to be available to us, they're going to be available to everybody, so I don't know what a bunch of discussion about them is necessarily going to accomplish. Um, I think at some point, we're going to have to do some homework and going through and reviewing the maps that have been posted in conjunction with all of the great feedback we've received is certainly something that I think is worthwhile to do and presumably would uh, allow each of us to do it in depth in a lot less time than these, these meetings tend to take. The other ones, um, since we are actually reviewing draft maps, I, I understand where the value comes in. Um, as for Saturday hearings, I, I personally think that we've really conflated Saturday with District Five. Um, because uh, when we had meetings in District Five, the turnout was always phenomenal. And um, just, it didn't matter the date, it didn't matter the time, District Five just always gave us um, a ton of input and was always very, very engaged, and I believe that's where our Saturday uh, meeting was. And so I, I don't want us to conflate Saturday with the cause of that. I don't know that had that Saturday meeting been anywhere else, that it would have been so uh, well attended or popular. So I, I still just question if we're going to be burnt out by the time we actually get to real maps that we need to um, iterate on.
Um, Commissioner Inman, did you have a specific point on that?
Um, I did, and uh, Commissioner Krugliak is, is uh, very correct on most of the points, but the one thing I would like to mention is on that meeting where springboard maps, or the springboard maps are presented, we do need to provide direction to flow at the end of that meeting so that they know what to do next to create a set of draft maps. And so that's why we have it in a meeting, Flo can present the springboards, we're going to review, uh, there will be a motion presented, and that motion will be something like move forward in this way with springboard number one to create a set of draft maps. So that's why we're having a meeting directly after the presentation of springboard maps, is so that we can propose and pass a motion to give uh, flow direction on what to do next.
Commissioner Dostal, I'll beg your indulgence for a minute, Commissioner Inman, when I look at the September ninth study, and I, I'm thinking of this in terms of whether we can fold everything into an October fourteenth meeting. The October seventh special meeting has a number of actions on springboard maps, but it does not specifically state the commission will provide reaction and guidance. That seems to be on October fourteenth.
That's by design, that's by design, because we don't have the racially polarized voting analysis yet. And so we need to get that, so you could table springboard maps until the fourteenth, I suppose, and do it all there, but we were breaking it up, and so then, then that addition in the fourteenth would be the RPV analysis to be added to what was presented in the earlier meeting.
Okay, so theoretically, we could dispense with the meeting on October seventh and do all the springboard map work on the fourteenth alongside the RPV study. It would just be potentially a very long meeting.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, given what Commissioner Krugliak can mention.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, no surprise, there's additional comments, and I do want to move uh, expeditiously, but I understand the need for some further discussion, Commissioner Dostal.
Thank you Chair Bane, I just wanted to um, mention that I, I really like the idea of moving the November twelfth to November thirteenth. For those on the commission, as well as those in the public who are working on Friday, this is a really important meeting, and I would really like myself and the public and all the commissioners to be really fresh and have lots of time, because if we start at five thirty, you know, we could be going through to midnight, I don't know. I ju- I just really like to have that on Saturday when it can be earlier in the day, and we haven't, for those of us who are Monday through Friday, haven't been working all day, so that's my comment, I really support moving that to November thirteenth, thank you.
And before, before you leave the floor, do you have any thoughts on location, because District Five has been raised? Um, this being theoretically could be held at the CAC, but we'd need to check with Barbara on that. I did want to see though if you had any specific reaction to the idea of holding it in District Five or somewhere in North County, as laid out by co vice chair Garcia.
Um, I don't have a specific thought on that, I like the um, County Administration Center just because it, it is central and it has the audio visual, so that's my only thought on that, but I don't feel strongly about that location.
Okay, and, and I apologize for being on the spot. Um, I do want to turn to co vice chair Katerina, but in a moment, Barbara, um, is, do you know offhand if the CAC is available on Saturday thirteenth?
No, we do not, and um, to answer Commissioner Katerina's earlier question around the security, since if this was on a, on a Saturday, uh, it's approximately two thousand dollars um, for every four hours after five PM, I would need to check what the cost would be for a Saturday. We also would need to confirm unless SPOC Inman is aware if flow is available um, for the thirteenth versus uh, the twelfth. Um, so those would be some considerations, and then I um, wanted to check with council, since this is termed a regular meeting. Um, if we move it from Friday, November twelfth to the thirteenth, um, Marguerite, that would, it would need to remain at CAC? You're on mute, Marguerite.
Yes, if you want to keep it a regular meeting, but CAC is set up for, is our best audio visual, visual venue, right?
Yeah, it would just depend if it's available on the Saturday and the security.
We have, we have to see. The alternative, if you wanted, the alternative would just be to cancel the regular meeting on the twenty eighth and schedule the thirteenth as a special.
Or the, we, we'd actually be canceling the regular meeting on the twelfth.
Right. Yeah, it's canceled.
And making, yeah, and make it a special on the thirteenth. So it's directly workable.
Yeah, if you want to move the location from the CAC, then just notice it is a special.
Correct. Okay, very good. Again, we have lots of flexibility and options there. Co-Vice Chair Katerina, then Commissioner Larson.
Mute, sorry. I just also wanted to mention that November twelfth is an A V, extra A V meeting. So if we are going to move it, we'd also have to check with Finance City to make sure they're available. And I feel like this is getting a little more complicated than it needs to be. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson.
I'd like to argue in favor of keeping the October seventh meeting. It'll be our first exposure to a real map, even though it's a springboard map, and we'll get a consideration of all the input that we've gotten so far. I think we all need the time to become familiar with this mapping process. So I think starting on the seventh of November is we just need to do it. That's it.
Okay, thanks for that. So I think we've had a good discussion. What I'd like to do is bring the motion to the floor for, for a vote to well, I'm hearing enough interest in November thirteenth that I would be willing to entertain a friendly motion from the movers or friendly amendment from the movers to change the, to adoption of the revised meeting plan with the amendment to change the meeting from Friday, November twelfth to an IRC special meeting on Saturday thirteenth. Okay, Commissioner Diaz.
Does that mean that I, I would, I, I support that, but we are keeping the November twentieth on there as tentative, correct?
Yes, we will keep that on there as tentative. That would be part of the vote. But we would go ahead and make that amendment now for this plan because I, I think I'm hearing enough interest in it.
Okay, then I second that motion.
Okay, very good. Those were the movers, correct? Good. Okay, so with that, the motion.
Chair.
Please, David.
I see the motion as being by Commissioner Chen, seconded by Commissioner Russ.
That's why I was asking. So Commissioner Chen, is that okay with you?
That's fine with me. Thank you.
Commissioner Russ.
It's fine by me as well.
The flexibility and constructivity is appreciated. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all. David, would you please call the roll for a vote to approve the updated IRC meeting and hearing locations and times with the change on the Friday, November twelfth date to Friday, Saturday, November thirteenth as an IRC special meeting with time and meeting location TBD.
Thank you, Chair Beam. Commissioner Dustal.
I.
Commissioner Russ.
I.
Commissioner Inman.
I.
Commissioner Serbin.
May.
Commissioner Chen.
I.
Commissioner Krugliak.
May.
Commissioner Diaz.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Katerina.
Sorry, Nay.
Commissioner Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Larson.
I.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Chair Beam.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
May.
The motion passes with Commissioners Serbin, Krugliak, Katerina, and Pons voting no. All other commissioners being present and voting aye. The vote is ten before.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners, for that. We move on to the second motion. Barbara, could we have that brought up?
Just give us one second. We'll bring up that motion.
Sure. And Marguerite, while, while we bring this up, thank you. Um, because we just approved canceling a regular meeting, the November twelfth meeting, can we include that within this motion?
Yes.
Okay. So Commissioners, I'll request a motion to approve the revised regular meeting schedule as included with the agenda materials, which is the move from October twenty eighth to November first, and to formalize the decision to cancel the regular meeting scheduled that was scheduled for November twelfth. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Sorry, who was that?
Larson.
Commissioner Larson, thank you. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Brown, thank you. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, David, would you please call the roll for a vote? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Pons.
Yes, my question goes to the issue of content during the meetings. And I know that was a comment from myself about can we separate the public hearing meetings from the regular scheduled meetings? And we've sort of connected the two together again. And so have we addressed that issue? I mean, because I'm voting on the date, the time, and the meeting location. But are we also voting on the content of those meetings, which includes combining the public hearings with the regular scheduled meetings?
My understanding is things exist now in terms of guidance from the commission is that per council's recommendation, the November first and December second meetings especially, well, I'm going to be careful here. The November first meeting for sure would be a combined meeting, but the IRC meeting, regular meeting attached to it, would strictly be related to comment, discussion, and, and new guidance on the maps. So it would be, in effect, a one-action item agenda meeting as was described earlier. The December second meeting, you make a very good point. There are other actions that are to take place in that, but that December second meeting is an IRC special meeting, and therefore there's a little bit more flexibility. I, I would recommend that we keep the possibility of chain, breaking that meeting up if necessary. Some of that will depend on where we are in the mapping discussion. Some of that will depend where we are on the other items on that agenda. But because it's a special meeting, we don't have to take any action on that tonight per se. But you're absolutely right. We need to attend to that meeting as to whether it's a joint meeting, a public hearing, and a special meeting. And if so, how much on the agenda is the special meeting goes beyond the map input. But we won't, we won't need to decide that in this vote.
That changes everything for me then, because only when I voted nay was because I thought the two meetings were connected on November first. But since you said the November first meeting is focused on the mapping process, I'm okay with it. That wasn't clear. So now that you explain that process, I want to change my previous vote of nay to yay because that changes dynamics of the schedule and the meeting process itself.
Very good, and I apologize for that. I should have made that clear.
No worries. You got a lot going on.
Yeah. David, can we record it that way, or will we need further discussion?
I, I am not sure, and I'm going to refer to Marguerite on that.
Okay, Marguerite.
I would leave the vote as it is, but I would note Commissioner Pons' clarification of the reason for his vote and that with further discussion, he supports the timeline.
So noted.
Commissioner Pons?
Absolutely. My vote won't change things anyway, but I'm good with that.
Otherwise, we'd call it up for reconsideration, but we're done.
Not necessary. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, though, for that. And thank you. It's, it's important to have that out in public and discussed. All right, so without any further discussion, we'll now move to a vote on the motion to, in effect, update, but to revise the regular meeting schedule specifically as included the agenda materials, specifically to move the October twenty eighth meeting to the November first meeting, as well as to cancel the regular meeting currently scheduled for Friday, November twelfth, which will be indeed supplemented, replaced by the special meeting on Saturday thirteenth that we just approved. David, would you please call the roll for a vote?
Thank you, Chair Beam. Commissioner Russ.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Serbin.
Nay.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Commissioner Dustal.
I.
Commissioner Diaz.
I.
Commissioner Larson.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
I.
Commissioner Inman. I think that's an I.
It is. I, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Krugliak.
I.
Chair Beam.
I.
Commissioner Katerina.
Nay.
Commissioner Chen.
I.
The motion passes with Commissioners Serbin and Katerina voting no. All other commissioners being present and voting aye. Twelve votes in favor to and opposition.
Very good. Thank you, David. Thank you, Commissioners. We now move to motion three. We can just leave that up? Thank you. The motion would be to approve an associated contract budget amendment for ABASD for an estimated $15,320 for additional audio visual, video support from the subcontractor. Now, I'll note that this is already going to require some updating, but I don't know that we can do that tonight, especially without a location and venue determined. Barbara, before I call vote on that, this would still be, though, useful to do because of what you laid out earlier, correct?
Correct. Unless council has a different recommendation, I would agree.
Marguerite?
No, I support. I agree with Barbara.
Okay, very good. So, um, okay, good. Sorry, that was Co-Vice Chair Garcia?
Yes.
Good. Second? Commissioner Brown, thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none. David, please call the roll for a vote.
I think you do have a couple of requests to speak.
I am very sorry. I thought that had been earlier on, so that's on this agenda item, correct?
Yes, on motion three, I, I have a, a question.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
I'm sorry, I, I was not clear. It's commissioners who want to speak.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I did not see hands. I'm, I'm really sorry. Can we go ahead and take the motion screen down then? And I have Commissioner Diaz and Co-Vice Chair Katerina. Commissioner Diaz, please.
I was going to entertain that, I mean, considering that, you know, the changes in the schedules, and I, I would love to know the exact amount in addition, like additional that we would be voting on rather than I just, I just know that that often changes and we don't want it to be a living target. Maybe we could take the amount out for purposes of this vote. I don't know. And then maybe word it to say something else like prove additional support for the additional special meetings that we have. I don't know. I'm just, I'm just trying to, I, I just don't feel comfortable voting on motion three, knowing what we just voted on before. And that is on costs.
Okay, so you're, you're suggesting, you're saying you're uncomfortable voting on that, knowing that there may be other costs out there, and perhaps it would be worth considering what amounted to an open-ended commitment to provide whatever AV support was necessary. We can work on the wording on that. I just want to clarify that for Commission discussion. Very good. Thank you for that. Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Still muted, sorry. Okay. I would, I'm happy to vote on this motion now. We know we need the AV for these four meetings. So, you know, if anything, it's going to be less if, let's say, something doesn't happen. But we know at least we need to do this, and because it's a contractual subcontractor with ABASD, we need to make sure that we get that done correctly, the same as we did for flow and the legal counsel that they provided for the racialized voting analysis. But, but secondly, I would like to ask staff in their next, I know they have one coming up in a few minutes, hopefully, but in their next monthly budget report to provide us with an estimate for security, because if indeed it is going to be $2,000 for every four hours for at least four meetings, and it could be more, that's going to add up pretty quickly. So I would like to see that addressed in, within the staff budget report that comes at the end of each month, if, if that's, if that's appropriate. But I can support moving forward, of course.
Thank you. Barbara?
Thank you. A couple of things to, to build upon what Commissioner Katerina just mentioned. It's going to be really important that we can secure the new date with Lindsay in terms of the AV support, because that would be a shift. The, the second thing is depending on whether it's the CAC or other county facility, we would not have a rental cost. But if we end up not being able to get it on the Saturday, especially on a holiday weekend because of the eleventh, the county, the building's being closed, you could have that additional cost, which we would not know tonight. And then the security is after hours, it's the $500 an hour estimate. But I, it could be more on the weekends. So there's a lot of, of those unknowns. And, and Commissioner Katerina, if I understand you, moving forward, after we get that confirmed, being able to update the full IRC commission when we do our budget updates is not a problem. So I just, there's a lot of unknowns at this point for this additional date. So I just wanted to, to remind the commission.
Thank you for that. Other comments? Very good. So I asked staff to bring up the motion one more time. And seeing no further discussion, David, would you please call the roll for a vote on motion three to approve an associated contract budget amendment for ABASD for an estimated $15,320 for additional AV support from the subcontractor?
Thank you, Chair Beam. Commissioner Diaz.
I'm abstaining.
Chair Beam.
I.
Commissioner Serbin.
I.
Commissioner Hanson.
I.
Commissioner Katerina.
I.
Commissioner Krugliak.
I.
Commissioner Brown.
I.
Commissioner Dustal.
I.
Commissioner Russ.
I.
Commissioner Larson.
I.
Commissioner Pons.
I.
Commissioner Inman.
I.
Commissioner Garcia.
I.
Commissioner Chen.
I.
Chair Beam, the motion passes with Commissioner Diaz abstaining. All other commissioners being present and voting aye.
Thank you, David. Thank you all, Commissioners. And as always, in any motion involving budget, I want to reassure the public and all Commissioners that staff is under continuing guidance to find the most cost-efficient and effective means possible to meet the requirements. So thank you for that discussion. Thank you for sending that out. And I'm sure we'll have that kept in mind throughout our discussion. With that, we move to agenda item six. The ABASD outreach and metrics update. Let me return to ABASD. Jason, are you still with us? Okay, and I'm not seeing anyone from ABASD on screen right at the moment.
It was just transitioned back.
Ah, there he is. Sorry.
Thank you. Sorry to wait a moment there.
No, welcome back. Okay, so without objection, we'll, I'll be turning to Jason for the outreach and metrics update. I'll note that this is an informational item with no action required of the commission specifically. Jason?
Thank you, Chair Beam. If we could please have IRC staff bring up their screen for the presentation. Thank you so much. It's been a couple of meetings since this report was initially created. I know it's been in your dockets for a few times now. So going through this, I'll have a few updates going through it. And then we'll have some subsequent updates following this one as well. Going through this first slide and the Going through this first slide in the outreach report, it is updated since our last reported regular IRC meeting on the 2nd of September. We finalized our public service announcement for radio and TV in English and Spanish, and leveraged ABASD's member benefits to secure airtime to Cox Communications and Spectrum valued at $10,000. The PSA did run until 9/25. We are receiving from Cox a run report, and we'll share all that data as soon as it's available. We, airtime across San Diego County to include major networks such as ESPN, MTV, Bravo, MSNBC, CNN, Oxygen USA, Food Network Beach, one and many more. The PSA did run a minimum of times of 100 times through 9/60, 9/25, as stated earlier in that timeframe. We updated the presentation script for the District 3 pre-mapping public hearings. We disseminated flyers at multiple community events listed here. We also disseminated a District 3 pre-mapping public hearings, the one from 9/2, and digital flyers to more than 104, CBOs, 18 tribes, 28 chambers, 72 planning groups and special districts, 85 ethnic and community media outlets. Also received earned media and several publications, including Coronado Eagle, The Village News in Fallbrook and Bonzal, The San Diego Union Tribune, KPBS, East County Magazine, Delmar Times, The Voice of San Diego, and San Diego Reader. We were featured in online community calendars. Some of them included 10 News, 211, San Diego, Fox 5, KPBS, Patch, San Diego Community Newspaper Group, San Diego Reader, and The San Diego Union Tribune. Please note that we've also updated and distributed digital messaging for the 9/9 and 9/18 probably pre-pre-mapping public hearing, also the 9/23 in District 5 and 9/25 general meeting. And we've prepared the draft map public hearing outreach plan. Prior to this, for the work examples, I know we have a video queued up to present. I know many of you have seen this, but the PSA, if we could please run that.
Is there supposed to be sound with that?
There is. Do we want to make one more attempt to run it with sound?
By the way, the last, there's a typo on the last screen.
It's time. Time to draw the lines. The County of San Diego Independent Redistricting Commission needs your help in redrawing the boundaries of the county's five supervisor districts. How district lines are drawn can impact you and your community. From the opportunity to elect representatives of your choice to decisions about how county resources are allocated, visit drawyourcommunity.com for more information. It's time you draw the lines.
Commissioner Chen, the letter I, correct, in that one?
It said community the first time it came through. It says community now.
Wonderful.
I think, yeah. Or transmission error. Go ahead.
Thank you for that. If we could please bring back up the slides? Thank you. So that was the PSA that was, has been running. I mean, you can see two examples here of what engagement has looked like on both Facebook and Twitter. Go to the next slide, please. Additional work examples online as well here. Next slide, please. And there's some more examples of some of our print and online publications, as mentioned earlier. I'll draw your attention here to some of the notes from this slide with respect to some of the items such as the, of note, the Facebook reshared organic reaches between ABASD or CBOs and earned media was over 110,799. Following that, the one that had the most impact was their online ads, which was our digital impressions countywide, which are over 2.5 billion, which equated to approximately 500,000 per supervisory district. As you saw, the PSA displayed earlier between TV and radio through Cox Spectrum, KPBS, NBC Telemundo, and Latina Radio. And then also the email campaigns distributed through all the partners as mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. For the public hearing report is noted here, as recommended by the Commission before, to exclude IRC Commissioners, contractors, and IRC staff. And you'll note here that the largest attendance was September 23rd in District 5, which also had the highest virtual attendance. You'll note that our largest meeting also had the most ecomments about triple of subsequent meetings. A quick review of the graph also shows that virtual attendance is a preferred way of participation, and ecomments is also the preferred way to submit public comment. That's also included in the next slide. And the public comment received here. And that these is in your packet as well. And next slide to the survey results, please. These are, once again, volunteer survey results. No surprise, at 9/23, we received the most surveys relative to the attendance. Next slide. Additional comments for the survey results, like to reiterate as per the comments earlier in outreach plan, that you can see District 5 had the most surveys compared to District 4, and this graph actually illustrates was the lowest. Next slide, please. This is zip code, frequency of survey responses. The larger, obviously, the more responses we had. Next slide, demonstrated age between the survey results. Next slide is gender. Next slide is race and ethnicity. Long slide is household income. And following slide is homeownership. Next, we go to industry and community organizations. These were ones who had registered for each meeting. You can see here from the August 12th meeting, and then followed to District 1 for the August 18th meeting. Following that, on the next page is for District 2, the August 26th meeting. And these were submitted by these community organizations, or as noted in their survey, exactly as they were in District 3 on the September 2nd meeting, and District 4 on September 9th. And the following are the communities of interest, as they were per those meetings. Let me see, listed here, among some of them, the next slide. For the District 2, August 26th, and the summer, District 3, September 2nd. Next slide. And District 4 on September 9th. Next slide for the general meeting, the September 18th. Some of the COIs in District 5 on September 23rd. And the following slide for the general meeting on September 25th. And the last slide is just our or display. From here, next steps and questions. Cataloging some of the questions asked by Commissioners previously. What was the strategy? It was utilizing all media and all platforms in a short amount of time, saturating as quickly as we could through those digital display ads, social media, email through trusted messengers, as well as TV and radio. What went well, what worked? Digital ads and targeted email through those trusted messengers were most, most definitely the most effective. At this time, we do not have the subsequent information from TV and radio, but as mentioned earlier, we will report back with those findings along with the digital ad click through rates or CTRs, as are known. What in stride adjustments are being made? I will be focusing on areas of communities with lower engagement, as noted, such as District 4, including targeted emails, additional CBO engagement through additional targeted MOUs with those partners, and a short online ad campaign for continued and repeated impressions. As many of you are aware, most folks pay attention at about the third impression, and our goal is to engage through multiple medium and multiple, multiple times. One final potential measure of success, if we are to follow the California Redistricting Commission's ratio of success, it's reaching or engaging one in every 1,000. Our goal would be reaching approximately 3,000. We are currently at about 600, which, as we know and have seen, will continue to see increases as we get closer to the final map. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you very much, Jason, and thanks to the entire ABASD team. Thanks to both RSPOCs for this work on helping, getting us an update on advancing the IRC's work and including that key focus to maximize broad and diverse public outreach and engagement. Before we move to Commissioner comments, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on the side.
Thank you, Chair Bame. We did not receive any request in advance of the meeting, that if any member of the public would like to address the Commission, we'd welcome your comments. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom, or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment, Chair Bame.
Thank you very much. So I have Commissioner Brown, co-vice chair Katerina, and then Commissioner Pons. Commissioner Brown, please.
Jason, I just wanted to clarify something. I saw a slide, a couple of slides ago, and it looked like you mixed up District 4 with District 5. Maybe it should have been the other way around. I don't know. Anybody else catch that, or was I not seeing when I was?
No, I, I saw it too.
My apologies. Let me go back to the slides and see. Was it on the public input received, or was it the survey results?
Uh, could be either one.
I will go back and note that to make sure that that's edited properly.
Okay, because Escondido is, I mean, not Escondido, but Carlsbad, Oceansides, Vista, San Marcos, that area is all District 5.
Correct.
So, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Co-vice chair Katerina?
Okay, um, thank you, Jason. It was a real pleasure working with your team, and I hope all the Commissioners appreciate how difficult it is to get these campaigns up and running as quickly as they were able to do. Normally, you would have all your collateral material approved and your messages approved before you start outreach, but we were running down the path with both projects running at full, full steam ahead. My question, Jason, is, are you going to try to get the PSA covered in, you know, in another, in the month of October or November? Knowing the long lead times that they typically need. I know the PSA was designed to have long legs, so it wouldn't necessarily need to be changed, because we're basically driving people to the website. But I'm just curious if that's something that your team is working on. And then my second question, it's not a question for you, Jason, but it's more of a comment for staff. And I don't know how the other Commissioners feel about this, but I think it would be very important for us to continue to conduct those surveys. And in order to be consistent, we would have to do the same survey with the same practice. So we put the survey on the chair for people in the room, and we ask the participants online. So I don't know if that's something staff is considering, but I, I think, I think, you know, we should ask them to, to consider to do that for the, for the meetings coming up, just so we can track our progress as we move forward. And that's it.
Thank you. Jason, did you respond on either of those?
Yes, Chair. Thank you, co-vice chair Katerina, and thank you for being so diligent in working with us through this time. We're very, very appreciative of all the time and effort spent with our entire team throughout this whole process. Regarding the PSAs, short answer is yes. That also includes a number of factors or caveats with that, yes. And there is some time to preload some of those to make sure we could run those through that time. It also depends on the inventory. So we're looking to make sure that those that are either providing the best, either gratis, or we're having to sponsor some of them, making sure that we can provide those. Otherwise, you know, we'll, we'll be reporting which ones and which groups are successful in receiving or being able to preload the PSAs through those months.
Okay, thank you for that. So I have Commissioner Pons, then Commissioner Hanson, then Commissioner Diaz. Commissioner Pons?
Hey, Jason, thanks a lot for all of the efforts by ABASD. I'm gonna make one request, and that is that ABASD goes tactical and focused, because the message previously was of the basics of the process. We're in the final throes of the process. Now I want you to focus the audience on the map drawing process and what that means to them as a community. And so if you would just work right of the pre-mapping process and talk about the map drawing process and what that means in future engagements, I think that would be great. The second point or question would be going tactical. Is it a violation to sort of go into houses of worship and put out, hand out flyers? Because look, everybody's world has been turned upside down because of COVID-19. But there's one thing that still remains, and that's them going to these houses of worship for hope. So are you going into those houses of worship and passing out flyers? And if not, is it a violation to do so?
First of all, thank you, Commissioner Pons, for your comments. You, I have to say that you are among the Commissioners that always provides us some feedback, and not just in the work that we do, but being able to provide to the public on how in-depth we're going for some of these items and making sure that those metrics are not just reported, but done in a way that has a lot of depth. So we're very appreciative of your comments as always, and we try to reflect those as often as we can. Regarding the, the houses of worship or any of those groups, I could probably defer to the Council, maybe Marguerite, you count on that. But in terms of community of interest, my understanding and understanding of our team is that we don't believe that that is off the table in terms of being able to outreach to those groups. So maybe perhaps Marguerite can lighten us a little more on that.
That's a, it's a good question. I think that would depend on the, I know of nothing illegal about it, but I think that would depend on the practices and the permission provided by the, the institution. And perhaps you can have a table outside in the plaza. I don't know. That would be completely up to them.
Thank you, Marguerite. I would note, though, and I appreciate the comment, that we've certainly had any number of community leaders talk not just about their houses of worship as part of their community of interest, but we've even had some of the leaders of those houses of worship. So I would assume just along the lines of what Marguerite was suggesting, Jason, any kind of discussion with them to move things along and make sure we're hearing all that they may want to give is appropriate, with, of course, careful consideration to equity and fair outreach to all. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I loved your report, and I thought it was very, very graphically interesting and informative. I too believe, like Commissioner Pons says, we've got to be focusing on the map. And there was a map in the UT about a month ago, at least, maybe a little bit more, that showed the existing city districts in bright colors. They, and it had a percentage in there of either the amount their had, population had added or subtracted since 2020. And it gave a clear explanation of why redistricting has to happen. And I've had a couple of conversations with some of my friends and acquaintances that show a tremendous lack of understanding about redistricting. And well, if we don't need to add districts, why are we redistricting? And I think that some kind of a graphic like that would, would really catch them. And I, I can't believe that they did that for the city and not the county at the UT. The other thing I would urge is that when you're, you're planning your airtime for the PSA, I noticed that you had a lot of national networks listed as the places that you were going after. But you need to be looking at our, our local TV stations, the KUSI, and then that kind. And also, don't overlook the conservative outlets, because there, there are a number of voters and a lot of interested people who are on the conservative side. And let's face it, they don't get their news from MSNBC. That's all I'll say. But thank you. Good job.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Hanson.
Commissioner Diaz? I cut at exactly the wrong moment. If I cut at exactly the wrong moment. Let me just take extend the discussion a tiny bit on Commissioner Hanson's point. Points. I hope commissioners saw the quick K U S I piece on our Vista meeting. And if things go the way I hear they may go, there may be a piece coming out in the Union Tribune this weekend. Barbara, I'll ask you to keep an eye out for that. Make sure that's circulated to commissioners if and when it comes out. I do want to assure too, while we wait for Commissioner Diaz to come back, that Jason, Commissioner Serbin in his S P O C hat, Barbara, Marguerite have all said they're more than happy to keep generating ideas, but they want to hear as many ideas as possible from us. Commissioners, you may hear some more ideas coming in the coming weeks on what we can do as commissioners for additional outreach. But I know Jason and his team are trying to look at every avenue and reinforce just the point that I think several commissioners made. As we turn our focus to mapping, we need them to turn those efforts as well. I'll take Commissioner Serbin. Commissioner Diaz is back. Please go ahead.
Sorry, my computer disconnected and lost connection. I guess my question was, as it pertains, I I know District Four is is tricky because we encompass a lot of the city of San Diego. So my question refers back to how are we coordinating with city outreach efforts? If so, what are, what can we legally do as an IRC? And and I I want to be able to use that input as well. And it, or at least be informed by it, because I as I've been speaking to residents and community, as I know from personal experience, we're more engaged at the city level anyway on other issues and less so on county. So I I I know there's community groups out there doing probably their own map making as they convene their groups and organize with their communities. But what, if any, has A V A G S D reached out to city or actually coordinated anything? Or even chairs of the respective commissions?
Commissioner Diaz, if I may, I know that Co-Vice Chair Katerina did connect us with the city redistricting. I'm not sure if Chair Bame or Co-Vice Chair Katerina have any other additional comments on the willingness for us to engage the city commission on that. I know we have connected with their chief of staff as well to make sure that we are, or their staff, just to make sure that we are coordinating any efforts, even if it's anything related to anything externally as well. But if the chair or co-vice chair have any other comments to add on that, I certainly welcome those as well.
What a perfect time to turn to Commissioner Serbin to update on the entire team approach and everything Co-Vice Chair Katerina had started, some other things that several other commissioners have been involved with. So Commissioner Serbin, please.
Well, so I can address the 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 thought on sharing data that's been received by other commissions. So as far as the CRC, Commissioner Inman has done some some looking into that and has determined that we're able to access the data. And it's a matter, I think now of us as a commission, bringing that forward as an agenda item and passing a resolution to consider that the CRC data has data that we would also incorporate into our map drawing considerations. And if if that's if my understanding of that is correct, Marguerite and Ken, if you want to correct me or or add to that, I'm happy to allow you to.
Oh, I think that that is, that's my understanding as well. Yes.
Right. So with respect to the
Did you want to chime in? Did you want to chime in there?
No, it, you know, it would be appropriate before just adding a data to our data set that the commission make a determination that it is relevant. And because of course, the, we're dealing here with county supervisory all and the CRC is dealing with state legislative and congressional, but you know, it it's, it may be relevant. That would be a decision for the commission.
And in a similar vein, I imagine we would have a similar process or or similar consideration for the data set that might be offered by the city of San Diego if it's available for us to to share. But I, and to, I guess, answer your question, I would anticipate, I imagine an agenda item on that topic forthcoming, and I would defer to the chair as to how that that would be handled.
And we'll be working on that. Okay, and with that.
But I'm sorry, so
Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, just, and and thank you, Jason, for for the presentation, and I look forward to continuing to 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 continuing the fine tradition that that Amy set with 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 our with with our, we're going about with executing the contract. My my, what I wanted to bring up is in looking at the slide that showed the the zip codes and where the surveys are coming from. I don't see any any surveys that came back east of the 67 and I'm wondering if that if that's a, if that should be a concern. I don't, I don't know if if that's, I mean, that's what I see on the map, but I don't know if that's a thing that we need to necessarily be concerned about or not. So could you maybe speak to that, please? Thank you.
As Commissioner Serbin, our our hope is that we, you know, obviously get more responses to these surveys as we have more engagement going forward. Unfortunately, it's just sort of, I wouldn't say luck of the draw, but it's as adamant as we are in encouraging those to take the survey either at the beginning to remind them or following the meeting. It's just, you know, who happens to be willing to to provide the survey. So but we will note that to make sure that we're keeping an eye on that. And if there are folks we know that are participating from those areas, we'll try to make sure that we are able to capture that information as well. I do want to say, thank you to Commissioner Serbin for taking on this role. You've been a very trusted partner in multiple communities that I work in, and many of our team are very familiar with you. So this is, we're very much looking forward to you continuing in this role, following Commissioner Katerina.
Oh, thanks. I appreciate that. Yeah, I guess the I part of, part of the reason why I brought up the East County or, you know, the east of the 67 thing is because or an hour ago or so, we were talking about District Two and possibly having something out there. And I'm wondering like whether we ought to more seriously consider that now that I'm seeing where these, where we're getting our public comment from. And it's not something we need to like answer right now. Just, you know, it's it's a thought that I have, and I wonder if we ought to to flesh that thought out some more.
Thank you. And I have to actually make a comment. The two folks on my team just actually messaged me saying that surveys are actually still struggling in, so not all of them are documented in this. So our, we'll, we'll update this to see if any of that is included in there as well.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it, Jason.
Okay. And thank you again very much for all the questions and comments and guidance and input. Again, though, it is an informational item. No specific action before us tonight. With that, we move on to item seven, the discussion of the IRC's statutorily required final report. To begin, we'll hear a brief presentation by Marguerite Leoni. I'll note again, this presentation and the draft template for that final report were included with the agenda materials for tonight's meeting. Marguerite, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Chair Bame. And I think we have a brief PowerPoint on this. So you have a big job. But on top of the the job that you have in designing a a map consistent with state law, you're required to file simultaneously with the map a final report. And so we can go to the next slide. And it's right in the elections code. You can go take a look at it. The report needs to explain the basis on what you made your decision in achieving compliance with the criteria. Now, that is a different report from another type of report we've touched upon periodically. And that's the after-action lessoned, lessoned learned report. That is not a statutory item, and this presentation concerns only your statutory obligation to file a report. So going to the next slide. As mentioned, as explicit in the code, it's, it's, your report is required to link the mandatory criteria to the, to the map and the record. Why does your map look this way? What was the basis for your choices? You can use the report in that spirit to summarize public comment and document commission activities that led to the support for the choices made in drawing the map. And you'll draw pound also information from your experts. This is something new. We don't have an example to give you. We, the county was not required to file a report in 2010. However, we do have an example from the city of San Diego that did a similar report, and I think that's been made available to you. So next slide. On top of mapping and public hearings, this is going to be a significant job. And this is a proposal tentative timing for getting that report complete, completed in a timely manner. It has to be filed with the map. It's not like you can complete your map and get your report in 10 days later. There are simultaneous activities. So the proposal here, and obviously, this is the commission's report. So it needs to come back for commission approval and and final ratification of the of the final product. So the thought at this point is to bring back drafts of the final report, partial drafts, portions that can be completed at various benchmarks during the, during the process. With the final report on the final map, the report on the final map actually being drafted, we don't know what it's going to be. Likely or may not know until very late in the process. And that that would be drafted between the ninth and the 14th, when it would come back to the IRC for approval of the final map and then for approval of the final report. And then it would go with the map to the clerk of the board on the 15th. That's a statutory deadline. And so moving on to the next slide. Next steps. We're going to discuss a template today that's been developed at the officer level, officer and staff, I believe. We would need to develop a more detailed timeline, agree upon content and begin drafting. It's such a big job that it's not something that can be deferred to the very end of the process. And the next slide. And this is a little comparison between the final report that is statutorily required and the lessons learned after action report that has also been discussed by the commission. And I will point out that the city of San Diego commission last time around did both. They got their final report in, but then also did an after-action lessons learned report. And the California redistricting commission did the same. So the dual reporting is not unusual. And the last slide, or maybe that is the last one. If that's it, then I I give the floor back to you, Chair Bame.
Very good. Thank you, Marguerite. David, are there any requests from the public to address this sudden?
Any members of the public would like to address the commission on this item, we'd welcome your comments. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this item, Chair Ben.
Thank you, David. Commissioners, clarifying questions, comments, concerns? Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Swear I'll be quick. I I would just like to voice my support for having some kind of ad hoc committee to help produce this report. I think that the officers can put, you know, add quite a lot of value, obviously, but I also think we need to have commissioners' input as well.
Thank you for that. With that in mind, Marguerite, thank you for the presentation. Again, I know several people had inputs to it and appreciate the comparisons and the awareness of what others have done. This issue will not be going away, and I look forward to hearing more and asking commissioners for more of their thoughts and inputs for this and whatever channel we decide to proceed on. Next, continuing in the same vein, we'll hear about Agenda Item Eight, Capturing the Lessons Learned Tool. First, let me turn to Barbara Jimenez for some opening comments from staff. Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to provide a brief update. Staff has been researching various options to compile the key information about the work of the IRC. As Marguerite mentioned, both memorialize the efforts of the county's first independent commission and then to provide some insight and tips for the work of future commissions. So thanks to the Chair and Commissioner Frank Pons for continuing to main focus on this effort. And this is an important undertaking for the IRC as, you know, the the experience and the insight of the individual commissioners likely will be the most valuable part of the lessons learned contents. Staff has looked at a couple of different ideas for templates that could be adapted to capture the IRC feedback, which can ultimately be compiled into a narrative or any format that that meets the needs of the IRC. And so we're looking forward to hearing thoughts from commissioners on this item tonight, and and staff is standing by to support carrying out the vision for this lessons learned report. So to conclude my comments, I'll note that this lessons learned report is, as Marguerite mentioned, separate from the statutorily required final report presented in the previous sign item. There's more flexibility in the timing and the contents for a separate lessons learned or any type of IRC after-action report, since there's no legal requirement or deadline for the IRC to complete this. And I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Pons, who did an amazing job in putting down some ideas and thoughts as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Could you bring up the slides that has the example of the lessons learned framework? Okay, let me just make three quick points. One, this lesson learned is a tool, is a framework, and it's a process to collect, to collate and to categorize the lessons learned in the past, the present and going forward. And this is just not lessons learned that are not so good, but it also can include good lessons as well. The second part of this process framework, it allows us to analyze those lessons and figure out what appropriate actions is necessary to continue, discontinue, or to modify. And I'll talk more about that later. And the third piece is, I truly believe if we get this right, it can feed into the final report, it can feed into the after-action report and make our jobs a lot easier. So let's go to the next slide, please. So here's the purpose, here's the objective, and the model is the dot mil P F P F model. And what does that mean? It stands for doctrine. Those are the categories. Organization, training and education, material, leadership, personnel, facilities, policy, and of course, finance. Next slide. And I put a slide in here just to explain exactly what those categories are, and I'm not going to read it to you because it was in the reader head. But this is what those categories sort of, how they're defined. So you see the note, the asterisk at the bottom that says, some of these things just cannot be changed. If it's a statute, if it's a law that we've been given and we can't modify it, we have to acknowledge that. But that doesn't mean we can't make comments on it, right? Nothing is perfect. So we found some imperfections in the statutes of the law. I think we owe it to the next commission and to this process to make our contributions that reflect what we've learned. Next slide, please. So what do we do when we get this information that we collected and categorize it? Well, we look at it and we analyze it. This is the framework I have proposed is SWAT. It's sort of well-known. I I hope so, but it talks about the strengths, the weaknesses and the opportunities and the threats. Once you figure out what that lesson learned does to the process. Once you figure out what that lesson learned, uh, does to the process. Then we could take action on it, and the action would be to be to continue. The process or that part of the process. To modify that process or part of the process or to cancel it altogether, there was no value added. And that's an important one because it's hard to let go of something that's been adapted and and we think is a good idea, just to say it was a bad idea, let's let it go. Next slide. So this is the framework, this is the template. And so as you see across the top, you know, it's got submitted by, and that would be a dropdown menu. Who was who it was submitted by, the commissioner or staff or even a subcontract, I think they could give us some tremendous contributions to this process. The next slot, the next, um, uh, category is the dot mil PF PF. Uh, category, which is a, which also would be a dropdown menu, and you can select. Uh, whether it's a doctrine or all the way down until a finance issue. Uh, the next, uh, category would be, uh, description, no more than 250 characters. We gotta be clear, concise and succinct in our submissions. The next, uh, section is the SWAT analysis, which I talked about earlier. Is it a strength, weakness, opportunity or a threat to the process? And then the next column is the action for, uh, that analysis. Do we continue it? Do we modify it or do we just cancel it altogether? And then the last one is a recommendation, no more than 250 characters. Anything that you wanna say that you can't capture in the dropdown menus, look, it was just totally off the wall, we should not be able to think about it again. Or this is the greatest thing since sliced bread, or possibly a recommendation on how to modify. Next slide. Is that it? Okay, maybe that's it. So that's it. That is the tool, that is the template, that is a framework in the process. Again, we tried to make it as easy as possible, similar to the training, uh, format, drop-down menus and. I sort of limited, uh, us to 250 characters because I wanted to just make sure it's clear, concise and and comprehensive as possible. So I opened it up. Any questions that my fellow commissioners might have?
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioner Pons, and let me just interject with two points. Um, first of all, yes, you still owe me a steak dinner because. I, it was part of my retirement agreement that I would never ever have to confront the dot milk puff puff acronym again in my life. But in all seriousness, commissioners, I have seen this work really well. And I've seen it work well because it divides things into such specific categories that I think we can all share and comment. Interestingly enough, in my experience, when lessons learned are not grouped specifically like that. They're not quite as useful or clear. So it's really appreciated. Frank, thank you for that. Um, I do want to entertain questions and comments to Commissioner Pons or to staff. But before I do that, let me ask David if there are any requests from the public to speak on this matter.
If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, we'd welcome your comments. Please. Raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands. That concludes public comment on this matter.
Thank you very much for that, David. Again, this is an informational item, but I think an exceptionally useful one. It does go hand in hand, as speakers have said, with the final report. But if you've read any of the final reports and lessons or documents from other redistricting bodies, you know that quite often the lessons learned document. Has some of the most valuable and important insights, especially for a new commission getting started. So with that, I have Co-Vice Chair Katerina and then Commissioner Sherman, Co-Vice Chair Katerina, please.
Thank you, Chair Bane. Um, Commissioner Pons, I know how hard you worked on this and it's really an amazing, uh, structure that you've created and. Um, and with the help of staff, um, I think we're gonna have. An incredible opportunity to share everything that we've learned, as you said, the good and the bad. Because there's always a little bit of everything and, um, and it's really important for all of us to. Participate in this function because we will be able to help the next commission that comes down the road in 10 years. So thank you again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, Commissioner Katerina. And Commissioner Garcia in the staff as well. Commissioner Sherman.
Thank you, Chair Bane, and thank you very much, Commissioner Pons, for all your obvious hard work on advancing and developing this agenda item. Um, is it my understanding then that we ought to forward our, i- i- is this matrix gonna be, gonna live somewhere that we're. Updating or are we giving the, I'm I'm trying to figure out how to, what is it, what are the mechanics of this? Can you, can you explain that, please?
So in my mind, similar to the training, uh, modules, it would reside on the IRC's website. And you can go and populate it at will based on things that you've written down that you come across. And so it's can be instantaneous in real time so that you don't forget it. And so it makes it easy for the staff to collect, collate and to categorize and then for us to analyze it going forward.
Barbara, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
So, um, we're looking into the best way to be able to to do that. We just wanted to get confirmation that we were on the right track with the template, the dropdown. Um, and then we can look into the logistics, um, and confirm, uh, the best way to do that and get that information out. We we didn't wanna, you know. Proceed, of course, without all the feedback from from the IRC.
So is there, is there? I'm sorry, is there, what 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 should we be doing in the meanwhile? Like, should we be sending our lessons learned to staff in the meanwhile while we're, while while in the interim? Um, of the development of the this tool?
No, I I don't think so. I don't want the staff to have to decipher what was in your head and then sort of interpret it and put it into the module. What I want you to do is to. What I would like for us to do is to collect all of our notes. And then once it goes up and we go live, you just go and you start, you know, filling in information and populating the data. Into the, um, into the the model. And then once we do that, it's there. And you can go back and you can change it if necessary. But again, uh, just like Barbara said, I mean, this is just the first step. And once if we approve, you know, the tool, the format and the process, then we can just move forward with this.
Vice Chair Garcia.
Um, yes, uh, uh, again, I I would just like to, uh, briefly echo, um, Amy's, uh, co-chair, um, vice-co-chair Katerina's comments. Uh, excellent job. A couple of, um, one question, um. The 250, uh, no more than 250 characters. Um, I I'm assuming that you you've worked with this before and that then that's a good number. It it seems a little, um, stingy to me. Um, and I'm wondering, um, if we find that maybe it's it's a little difficult. Maybe it's just me. Would would we be able to to expand that or can you comment on that?
Uh, if you think 250 is too stingy, I I'm okay with that, but listen, I got this from the military and even in the military, we tend to be a little bit verbose. You know, getting our point across. I just wanted us to get to that point, make it clear, concise and comprehensive as possible. If 250 is too stingy, then maybe 350 is okay, right? I I figured you guys come from Twitter land, so this is nothing new for being very concise in your comments and putting your thoughts on paper. But if you wanna go to 350 again, this is for the commissioner to vote on and make their own contributions in their comments. If 350 is the number, I'm okay with that.
I I'm happy to start with 250, but that was my second question is, do we actually need, is this an, I know it's not, it's an informational item tonight. But do we actually need to? Bring this, do we need to turn this into an action item at some point in the future or can we just? Move ahead with this.
In all likelihood, um, unless Marguerite has a specific, uh, requirement for action on this, I think we can move ahead with it. Under normal procedures, Marguerite.
I agree with that, Chair.
Yeah, um, on the 250-character question, I will say we we might, uh. Provide a way to, in effect, have an attachment. So you need, you you submit your, uh, input and make sure to include that 250-character. Account, but if it's a summary and you attach a page, I I would assume we can find a way to make the electronics work on that. So it's some, we need to discuss a little bit more. Okay. Very good. Commissioner Sherman? Commissioner Sherman, maybe an old hand, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was, I was muted. I realized.
There you go, go ahead.
Has there been any thought given to allowing, um, lessons learned to be submitted anonymously? Is that something we want?
Uh, I would say no, because if it's something that's contentious. We would need to bring you before the commission to justify why you put it in. And so if you believe in it. You know, you should be willing to stand behind it. So anonymity, I don't think should be a part of lessons learned. I mean, that's the whole part, that's the whole issue of being lessons learned because it's transparent. It's factual, it's opinionated, but still it can be justified.
Yeah, and and you know, I wanna, I wanna encourage those opinions to to be brought forward. I just don't want people to be, to feel reticent in doing so if if they, if there's some. Like, um, reluctance to to. To voice, you know, to 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 voice it as coming from a specific individual.
Commissioner Servin, hey, listen, you, I've been wa- listening to these discussions. I don't think there any shrinking borders out there. If they feel strongly about a lesson learned, it'll come forward. And don't forget, they are not all negative. There are good lessons learned as well. So let's not focus on the negative. There are positive things too.
And Commissioner Pons, I may have to give you the gold star for generating the most smiles on the grid. That that was impressive. So appreciate that. Thank you very much. Speaking of which, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Kruglak, please. Commissioner Kruglak?
I was just talking and my phone was, uh, muted. I I think this is fantastic. My only question is how, um, this. My understanding is we're gonna be kind of like writing lessons learned on our own time through the website. And that will be compiled into a report. Um, I guess my only question is how this isn't running afoul of, um, the Brown Act.
Marguerite?
The submission of. There would not be a meeting. These are the submission of individual comments. There's not discussion or consensus. But it's a compilation of individual comments. On the website.
Would we have to take action to adopt them as the lessons learned?
We, we need to have a further discussion of this in light of the final report. Uh, but I would think that's certainly an option and certainly one I have in my mind. That we may have a discussion and vote to formally adopt it at the end of the process. Marguerite?
Yeah, I would think that the. At some point, the lessons learned would be the subject of a meeting. And it would be compiled into a a document. Like the one prepared by the CRC.
And I assume Commissioner Pons would also be comfortable, um, Commissioner Kruglak, I I would strongly encourage. If there's a need to highlight something either as part of an agenda item or to have a separate discussion. Before we get to that closure point, I'd I'd certainly want to encourage it. I think a number of our conversations are.
Anything to any agenda.
But I had that in mind, so.
It it's more just from the standpoint that like I'm I'm envisioning that if these are public. If they're public, I I don't know if they're public or if this is closed and it's just a a reservoir for us to comment. That I could easily see somebody else on the committee's comment and say, yeah, that's absolutely fantastic. I completely agree. Um, and to some extent, there's no, there's nothing to keep us from discussing maps. Or anything like that and and continuing to have an offline discussion as through comments.
Agreed.
So if you look at the dot mil PF PF, I mean, the maps, the product is not in there. Specifically because it focuses on the process and the elements of the process. So it's not designed to drop anchor, I'm sorry, it's not designed to focus on the final product. It's really designed to focus on the steps and the elements of that of the process, but I like what, uh, Commissioner Krugliak said because we can't violate the Brown Act.
That's true.
Uh, and I like that. Uh, I don't think it would require us to come together and and speak on an issue. Um, because if you wanted to remark on it, that would be part of the special meeting to discuss the lessons learned. Because the person that's making the entry would make the comments in the remarks section, not not the entire commission. It's not gonna be a pile-on. Type of process, you know, it's it's a standalone part of the process and the entries are standalone.
Yeah, I I think though Commissioner Krugliak, I hadn't envisioned this as an interactive type thing. I had envisioned it as a repository or I hadn't envisioned it at all, but I had heard it. As a repository of individual comments. Um, that were a collection, a a place to memorialize, uh, comments. Uh, about, uh, various aspects of, uh, the process. Um. On the other hand, it would be a violation of the Brown Act. For there to be an internal discussion. About a a discussion back and forth on these. Uh, i- i- if it were interactive, saying, yes, I agree and we ought to do this in the future and that that would be a violation. So I had not envisioned the interactive portion of it though, and that should not occur. So we'll have to structure this appropriately.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Marguerite. I didn't envision it that way either, but it was a good question to bring up. Thank you.
And I haven't, I I haven't talked with Commissioner Pons, Marguerite or anyone else in detail, but, um, one option might be. That we decide we want to move forward with a summary report of everything in these collections. That would be a draft report provided ahead of a meeting. We'd have a public discussion of it, we'd revise it and then approve it. All all options on the table, but I agree, it's a useful discussion and it reminds me to say. This is the time to be doing some of that lessons learned collecting now. The farther we get into the mapping process, the harder this will get to provide input. And while we definitely should be collecting lessons learned right through the end. If there are things you're already thinking about from March or May. This is a good time to write them down, have them ready and when the tool's available, put them in. So with that, Commissioner Brown, did you wanna add to that? Very good. So we'll go on to, again, uh, Commissioner Pons, thank you very much for taking lead on that. Uh, everyone who's contributed, thank you. We'll now move to item nine.
Oh, discussion, I'm sorry. Are we going to vote on this as an acceptable tool, framework and process? With the exception of the no more than 250 characters. Cause I I really don't wanna kick it down the road because the comments are very insightful. But I think we have a consensus that this is a tool that's acceptable for collecting those lessons learned.
We do, and because it's an informational item, uh, Commissioner Pons, and I am going to exercise my procedural authority. Uh, Marguerite?
Yes, and I'd like to address Commissioner Krugliak's Brown Act concerns. I think they're accurate. I think the tool is very nice. But how are we gonna structure it, uh, so that we are within the Brown Act? So I think maybe today is not the day. It's also not agendized as action.
Right. What what I am going to suggest is we'll ask staff to work with, uh, Commissioner Pons and council. To put together the tool. If it appears we need some sort of commission action to decide whether that tool, uh. Follows all this guidance, we will certainly bring it to the commission. At this point, as described, I think we can, uh, put it forward safely without, uh, Brown Act or other concerns. But we'll certainly bring it to the commission immediately if there's a need for that. So Commissioner Pons, with that in mind, we're gonna move ahead. Commissioner Brown? You're muted, I'm afraid. I think you're muted, Commissioner Brown.
Uh, if we each had an individual tool with the same framework. That we would keep on our own, uh, computers and we're just filling it in with our information. And then once there's a deadline and we just all submit it, is that gonna, is that gonna help us get around the Brown Act? Cause we wouldn't see other people's comments.
Yeah, no, my thought is we're going to likely lodge this with staff. So it'd be very, very similar process, but we would lodge it with staff.
Okay.
Right.
So it wouldn't allow us to see other people's comments?
Yeah, that's the portion. This is interactive, so.
Okay. Good.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you. And thanks again, Commissioner Pons. So we move on to item nine, a discussion of procedures for commissioner attendance. This is another informational item for the commission with no action required. As several commissioners have said, we're moving into the most critical phase of the IRC's work. And we're continuing to listen to and incorporate feedback from the public, input from the public, everything we can get from the public. It does seem appropriate to me to just briefly review and reiterate. Our shared interest and commitment as each and every commissioner has. in attending all our meetings in their entirety. Accordingly, the attendance procedure that was provided to you in your agenda materials is hereby introduced in consideration of all the requirements that we have and pursuant to the chair's authority under the bylaws and considering the requirements that we have, very specific requirements under the state election code. So that we have a clear and concise way ahead and procedures set ahead of very significant upcoming meetings through the year. Before I invite commission comments and questions, let me ask David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Thank you, Chair Bane. If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand by clicking the raise hand but button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this item, Chair Bane.
Very good, thank you. Any comments or questions?
Are we?
Sorry, 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 let me take hands. Co-Vice Chair Katerina, Commissioner Diaz, Commissioner Servin, Commissioner Kruglak, Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
Well, you know, I love policies and procedures, so this is right in my my favorite place, but but everything before the word buts a lie, as I say to my kids. I just have a question. And it pertains to the bylaws and the first paragraph. And and I get that the chair can make exceptions and that the procedures are supposed to be expansive from the bylaws, bylaws are the constraints from which we we operate. But it says that in the bylaws that the chair should be notified when when a commissioner thinks they're going to be absent, but then further down in the in the procedure, it says that the chair and the executive lead Barbara are supposed to be notified. I don't have a problem with Barbara being notified, but what I'm concerned about is, does that mean we need to change the bylaws to reflect a change in the policy as it relates to the structure of the process? And that's that's my, that is my question.
Thank you for that. Marguerite? Do you have a comment on that? Because I do not have my bylaws easily visible.
No, I I do have a comment. I think that it said that that's supposed to be for administrative convenience. It's the the key one is the the to the chair, but this is for purposes of record keeping.
Very good. I can't believe that, Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair Bane, for clarifying our attendance and for us commissioners that work full time, it can be very honorous to attend and I'm sure with those that have families as well. So I do appreciate some flexibility that you've given in the past and I just want to note that. And I've tried my best to attend all the meetings, but of course, the ones in the daytime will be problematic with me, which of course I will give advance notice, but yeah, I think I think it's pretty straightforward, so I wasn't sure why this was being brought up during the meeting. But I just, as far as in excused absences, I would encourage as part of the procedure to take into account if the meeting would present, if attendance would present economic hardship or work-related emergency or something where we would have to give less than twenty or seventy-two hours notice.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioner Servin?
Thank you, Chair Bane. I would echo Commissioner Diaz's comments in reviewing the the material. I was struck at the at the lack of discretion given to the chair in determining what would be deemed an excused absence. So I would feel more comfortable if there were if if the parameters of what were to be considered an excused absence were more flexible at the chair's sound judgment and discretion. And I guess maybe my question also in relation to Commissioner Diaz's maybe puzzlement as why this has been brought up. I'm curious, do we know whether, I mean, have we been keeping track? Or, I mean, at this point, are we all starting at zero or or what what are where are we with unexcused absences?
I'm I'm wondering if I want to turn to Marguerite first, but I I want to lay out that there are really two specific reasons for doing it now. One is that we really are entering the critical phase. And we need commissioners participating. And I I, when I say participation, it's what's in the bylaws, participating in all meetings throughout all meetings. Now, that's a challenge. But if there was any period where we needed commissioners participating, this is it. I have to admit that my thinking on this was also informed by some of the recent votes and debates we had without a full slate of commissioners attending. And in particular, because we have that nine vote requirement to take action. And we're entering a phase now where not taking action has real and demonstrable consequences to our core mission. I wanted to make sure it everything was clear and in writing and circulated in a meeting. Marguerite, do you have anything to add to that?
I I can now as I read the policy, it starts today.
Yes, sorry, I should have explained that as well. Great, Commissioner Krugliak and then Commissioner Hanson.
I'm I'm sorry, Chair Bane, so does that mean we're all at zero right now, right? Is that what you mean, Marguerite? It starts today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kruglak?
Yeah, I I think this makes perfect sense and the rationale makes perfect sense. There's a lot of science as to the effectiveness of meetings when they go four hours, five hours, six hours. And as you can imagine, that effectiveness drops to zero very quickly. So this is about being effective, this is about showing respect to the other members of the commission. There's another part of that, too, which is that these can't be twelve-hour marathon meetings. As we get to focus on the maps, the focus has to be focused on the maps. And there's there's something if if we're getting public testimony, that's one thing. But, you know, if if we have ten, fifteen item agendas, there's no way it's going less than five or six hours. And at the end of it, there's no way that any of us are going to do anything other than say aye to any action item that comes to the floor simply for the purpose of trying to get the meeting done. And a similar point, we had to table a lot of items last time because we had a hard stop at eight. I don't see us any worse for it. So I I just think that there's there's two sides if we really want to be effective in these meetings, we all need to be here. But they do need to either have a stop bedtime or have a limited agenda.
And I'm willing, thank you for that. I'm willing to entertain both ideas. I also would continue to encourage commissioners to do all they can to keep remarks concise, to work towards a result, to intervene as few times as possible and to make clear how a proposal or comment is going to move us forward. Commissioner Hanson, then Co-Vice Chair Garcia. I think you're muted.
I agree with what the previous speakers have said. But I also have reread the bylaws. And there is very clear in the bylaws what we all agreed to follow. We've never not had a quorum. Our meetings, I agree, have been painfully long and cumbersome. But short of there being a problem, just the fact that we had a hard time passing something one time is no reason to change procedures and to change the rules that we already agreed to in the beginning. We're volunteers, we're doing the best we can, we're being as involved as we can. But we are also left out of a lot of the details, a lot of the decisions that are being made behind the scenes. We don't even know about them until they come up at a meeting. And I think to put more pressure on us to tell more people why we have to miss a meeting is unfair and unprofessional. Sorry.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. I will say that I do not think there's anything particularly new in the procedure. It is simply an explanation of the procedure. I did feel it was a very good time to circulate something in writing. And I frankly have mixed feelings and I think I owe an apology frankly to the commission for not circulating something in writing before now. And so I do apologize for that. I don't think we broke any rules, but I think it's always e- easier to be clear. I do think in fairness, we're not adding more people to the explanation. It it's simply that sometimes Barbara has received an email and I have been copied on it. Sometimes I've received an email and I had to let Barbara know quickly because it involved a commissioner who was scheduled, for instance, to present at a meeting, who wasn't going to be available. And then most importantly, and I know Commissioner Hanson, you'll you'll agree with this. And I should have mentioned this. We are at a point now where we not only are facing the most critical part of our mission, but a number of commissioners have real, very serious medical issues with themselves or their family members. And I want to be clear with them how the process should work so that there's no undue burden or guessing on their part. That's out of respect for commissioners as individuals. But you're also absolutely right. Commissioners have known about the commitment from the beginning. They could be reasonably informed that it was going to get more intense as we went along, particularly to this point. And I do agree that while sometimes we've had a quorum and been able to do some of our work, it has been a challenge at times and the commission hasn't benefited from everyone being there at all times. That's the part I'm worried about because it's one thing on some of the issues we've been dealing with. It's another thing when we're getting into mapping. I'm much more comfortable where we have all fourteen of us weighing in actively, considering the materials and offering critiques as you just did. We we will continue to find ways that we can to do better and I want to hear criticisms as well as best practices. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Let's let's move on. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right. Then I believe, yep, we move on to agenda item ten. An opportunity for the commission's legislative ad hoc committee to provide a final update on its work. As a reminder, the legislative ad hoc committee was formed to develop legislative or other recommendations regarding the timeline for redistricting with the four-fold purpose listed in the HC's report. My understanding is that we'll be hearing from Co-Vice Chair Garcia first, right? To provide an update on the legislative HC's work. And then we'll hear comments from the public followed by clarifying questions. Summary of the HC's work was included in the agenda materials today. Again, this is an informational item with no action to be taken. Co-Vice Chair Garcia.
Thank you, Chair Bane. Just very quickly, you all received a lengthy report on on our activities. And and the reason for this report was because we wanted to provide we wanted to provide for the record a detailed account documenting the efforts of the ad hoc committee on behalf of the entire IRC to obtain an extension on our map adoption deadline to offset the days that we lost due to the additional delays in receiving census data. And that's from the expected receipt of data on July thirtieth until August, it ended up being a little bit sooner, we thought it was going to be August sixteenth. So our goal always was to preserve to the extent possible the time available for public input as envisioned in the original legislation. And we were ultimately unsuccessful in 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 obtaining that extension. I want to point out, however, that I I think a couple of good things came out of of our work. We developed a good working relationship with our ROV. And I think that will stand us in good stead as we move forward. And we also, because we did a lot of outreach to our San Diego County Legislative Delegation, we actually were successful in meeting with every single one of them. We we we, each one of us met with different, we assigned ourselves different legislators and their staff to meet with. So they are now very familiar with the fact that there is an independent redistricting commission at the county level, and I think that's a good thing. So as I said, in the end, we were ultimately unsuccessful in obtaining a a map adoption deadline extension. And the you know, there was, there was a lot of sympathy expressed for our for our request, but ultimately we we just couldn't get it, couldn't get it to happen. The California Supreme Court issued a ruling for the statewide commission, the CCRC, granting them an additional twelve days. And so they now have an an ad- an adoption deadline of December twenty-seventh. And but before that, we, one of the things that, the last thing that we had to consider, once we realized that Senate Bill five ninety-four was just not not going to provide us the the relief that we were asking for was whether or not to file an amicus letter in support of the statewide commission's motion. Then they were asking for an extension out to January fourteenth. We decided that it really was that there would, when we weighed the costs and benefits, we decided that there really was very little, if any benefit to the IRC of filing an amicus letter to support the CCRC's emergency motion. As it turned out, there were a number of key stakeholders who filed letters opposing the CCRC's request for an extension of the deadline. So in in the end, I think that that decision was a good one and we we basically folded up our tents at that point. I don't really have anything else to say except that I want to thank the rest of our of the other ad hoc committee members, Sonia Diaz, Ken Inman and Jack Russ. We had, we had a great time together and we learned a lot and I would do it again. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let me first turn to David and see if there's any requests from the public to comment on this item.
If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this item, please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands, that concludes public comment on this side of Tribune.
Thank you. I'll offer my concluding comment appraised in a minute. But before then, any questions or comments from commissioners?
Thank you.
Commissioner Servin and then Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I I also wanted to thank everyone on the committee and Chair Bane for for really grasping this really complicated delicate situation and and running with it. So I really do appreciate the amount of work you did. And and you don't always end up with what you want, but you guys did a great job.
And I'll just add my thanks and also, no, for the record as intensively as I can, there was a huge win in this in making clear our commitment to doing everything we could for public input. It was done the right way, it was done with respect for all stakeholders. And I think it made it made for an effort we can all be proud of. And I do thank all members of the ad hoc committee for this, but I also thank commissioners. There were a number of times when commission action was required and it was taken very expeditiously and effectively. So my thanks to all. It it was a pleasure to have a role in it as well, but it's especially a pleasure to see the ad hoc committee doing all it did. So thank you for that. We move on to agenda item eleven, the monthly budget update, another informational item with no action required tonight. We'll hear some brief remarks from staff, Nicole Temple in particular, and then move on to public comment as well and followed by clarifying questions. And then move on to public comment as well and followed by clarifying questions and comments. Nicole, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bane, for the chance to back clean up here and provide a very brief update to the IRC. I think staff's going to be displaying the line on a budget that was included with the staff report in the agenda material. Thank you. Additional details and invoices were included with your agenda materials. So to summarize, as of mid-September, a total of almost a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars was spent. With projected spending of nearly a hundred and thirty-one thousand through the end of the month, leaving the IRC with just not, oh, just over nine hundred and five thousand remaining. From a total budget of about one point two million. All expenditures over the past month were anticipated. The largest category of spending, total spending continues to be for contracted legal services. Other significant expenditures include for IT equipment, translation and postage. With lesser amounts for IT other, which is Zoom and advertising, which is social media ads for the education tour. So subject to your questions, this concludes a brief monthly budget status update for ongoing transparency and accountability over the use of public funds.
Thank you very much, Nicole. David, are there any requests from the public to speak on this agenda?
Any members of the public would like to address the commission on this item, you're welcome to do so. Please raise a virtual hand at this time by clicking the raise hand button on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're dialing in by phone. Not seeing any virtual hands, that concludes public comment, Chair Bane.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Co-Vice Chair Katerina.
I know, I know we're all tired, but I just wanted to, you know, I'm I'm appreciative of all the work you do, Nicole. And and staff to help, help make this commission successful. I'm just wondering, you know, we've, we've got an outreach effort with ABSD. And I, and I saw that there were online expenses related to the education tour. Is there anything that county can do to support ABSD's efforts? In in relation to perhaps using our budget more, you know, effectively, not more effectively, but just effectively. And I just want to leave that out there. I'm not asking for an answer today, but just food for thought.
We will add that as well as other comments made throughout the conversation tonight. Nicole, I know, has been taking careful notes, this is Barbara and other staff, and we'll make sure to have those injected to the next. Or to the ongoing budget process, I should say. Very good. Any other questions or comments? Excellent. That concludes our business before the independent redistricting commission tonight. Our next meeting, the details of which I think were included in our approvals early tonight, will be a special meeting. Next Thursday, October seventh at four PM. That will be held at the County Administration Center, sixteen hundred Pacific Highway, room three oh two. Subcode nine two one oh one and include participation virtually by Zoom. More details and media links are available to the public on our website, www.drawyourcommunity.com. Commissioners, please be in touch with staff on any logistical needs you have. And thanks again to everyone for attending today. This meeting is adjourned at nine twenty-three PM. Thank you. And good night.